Welcome to the Tuesday, January 19th, 2021 concurrent regular meetings of the Walnut Creek City Council and the Public Facilities Financing Authority. The first meeting of 2021. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Brown Act as currently in effect under the State Emergency Services Act, the Governor's Emergency Declaration related to COVID-19, and the Governor's Executive Order N 2920 issued on March 17th, 2020, that allows attendance by members of the city council, city staff, and the public to participate and conduct the meeting by video conference. Video conference locations are not open to the public. As some attendees may be participating for their very first Walnut Creek City Council meeting or their first teleconference meeting, I wanted to welcome everyone and talk briefly about the public comment process. For each agenda item, there will be an opportunity for public comment on the item. Thus, if you desire to speak to an item on the agenda this evening, please hold your comments until the council considers that item. Additionally, we have a section on the agenda titled Public Communications, which is for public comments for items not on the agenda. Any comments during public communication should not relate to an item that is on the agenda this evening. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be initially allocated for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communication for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the meeting if necessary. This process is consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, which was adopted on July 15th, 2014, and last amended on September 3rd, 2019. It will allow for all public comments to be received during the meeting for items not on the agenda. When I open the public comment period, use the raised hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only, which will alert staff that you have a public comment you would like to provide. We ask that everyone who wishes to speak out on an item, please use the raised hand feature to state your intent to speak when the item is called. Please wait your turn, and once brought into the meeting, state your name and city of residence for the record. As the council is conducting these meetings via video conference and given the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased number of speakers that have wanted to make comments on various issues during our meetings and consistent with city policies related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. The council will accept oral comments. Written comments, however, submitted have been and will be posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record but will not be separately read into the record. To provide a live remote public comment, join the Zoom video conference meeting. The meeting ID is 941-6410-6771, and the passcode is 767813. Should you choose to not provide comments but would like to view the meeting, you may do so in one of the following ways. You can go to YouTube Live and visit the city of Walnut Creek's YouTube channel. You can watch it on cable broadcasts, which is Comcast Channel 28 in Walnut Creek and the Incorporated City, Rossmore Channel 26, WAVE Channel 29, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Livestream only on the city's website. At this time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, would you please read the roll call?
Councilmember Darlene.
Here.
Councilmember Haskell.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Happy New Year.
Mayor Pro Tem Francois.
Here.
And Mayor Wilk.
Here. Before we get into the next, the next part here, I wanted to first take a couple of moments to acknowledge something that happened about 10 days ago and certainly something that we are all familiar with. Get my screen up here if I could. We're nearly two weeks out now from witnessing the unbelievable happen at our United States Capitol. An uprising of our own citizens against our elected leaders. I watched in horror as people charged the building, committed senseless acts of violence, and displayed an inhumanity that was a shock to my system and likely yours. Walnut Creek paid respect to the fallen Capitol Police Officer Brian Sicknick by lowering our city flags to half-staff. Tomorrow, we celebrate the peaceful transition of power in our country with the new president to be inaugurated and a historic vice president to take the international stage with him. Whether you voted for President-elect Biden, President Trump, someone else, or not at all, please join with me in celebrating the values of democracy, freedom, and fair elections upon which our country is built. As we anticipate the activities in Washington tomorrow, know that we're keenly aware of the threats, not only in the nation's capital, but in state capitals around the country, including our own. The California National Guard has been deployed in Sacramento and a six-foot fence surrounds our Capitol Building. While the threats may not be as many as in DC, local agencies, including our police department, are being briefed regularly on any concerns even in Walnut Creek. We don't have any credible threats of problems here, but I want to assure all of our Walnut Creek residents that we'll be prepared if anything arises in our community. Peaceful protest has been a part of Walnut Creek for years. Many people focus on the events over the past year as indicative of a new activism rising in Walnut Creek, and some of the demonstrations in our community have had concerning results. I've attended many of them to witness the sentiments in our community firsthand, including one a week and a half ago where a march devolved into an attempt to bait our police officers into a confrontation. We'll always support the right to protest in Walnut Creek. Thousands of people flooded the streets of Walnut Creek for the last four years as part of a nationwide movement of women's marches, and I was proud to be there to speak and to march at them. We will listen to your voices, even if at times we disagree, but we'll ask everyone to be respectful of each other and not let violence be what is remembered over the message. Safety above all is what we as a community and a city council expect of Walnut Creek. I hope all of our residents will join me in congratulating the new administration and wishing President-elect Biden and Bay Area native Vice President-elect Harris all the best. They have much healing to do of our nation, literally and figuratively. And regardless of your political beliefs, please join me in celebrating our shared goals. And now I'd like to ask if anybody else on the city council would like to make any further comments or remarks. Doesn't look like we have any. So, our next step will be a proclamation on the agenda. And I'm proud to say that we've got two proclamations for our 2019 Employees of the Year. Carolyn Jackson, who's our Community Relations Manager for Arts and Recreation, and Sebastian Paulson, our Traffic Maintenance Worker for Public Works. So, if they can come to the screen, I will read the proclamation. And we'll start with Sebastian. So, Sebastian, join the public, I will start officially here. Whereas Sebastian Paulson joined the Public Works Department of City of Walnut Creek as a traffic maintenance worker in 2016, and Sebastian serves as a parking ambassador, helping educate the public on use of the newly installed parking meters. And Sebastian is an employee that will take everything and anything you throw at them and in return give a smile and say, "Sure, I can do that." He has a positive can-do attitude that resonates across the city. And Sebastian is the one to call on when you need a sign fabricated, whether it be a street sign, public art sign, or heritage walk sign. He's an expert for the city in this arena. Respect, excuse me, respected by his coworkers and other agencies. Sebastian has been teaching fabrication techniques to the Traffic Control Superintendent Association meetings for the last two years. And whereas Sebastian is creative and innovative, having designed tools for coworkers to make the work more efficient and reduce opportunity for injury, his continual commitment to the city to improve the safety of employees and its citizens is evident. Sebastian has consistently demonstrated the city's core values of respect, integrity, excellence, teamwork, and creativity throughout his career. His commitment to the city organization and the community epitomizes these values. And whereas the city of Walnut Creek sincerely appreciates the outstanding contributions made by Sebastian Paulson in his career with the city and wishes to commend and pay him special tribute. Now therefore, I, Kevin Wilk, Mayor of the City of Walnut Creek, on behalf of the city council on this 19th day of January 2021, do hereby recognize Sebastian Paulson's accomplishments, dedicated efforts, and commitment to the city and made him along with Carolyn Jackson as the Rosie Cohen Employee of the Year for 2019. Please join me in giving Sebastian a hand. And Sebastian, we will be getting your proclamation to you in very soon. Which brings us to Carolyn Jackson. And whereas Carolyn Jackson joined the city of Walnut Creek as Community Relations Manager in 2015, supporting the needs of the Arts and Recreation Department at the highest level. And whereas Carolyn comes to work every day with a smile and a positive can-do attitude, she goes above and beyond her normal great work and truly deserves to be recognized for her efforts. And Carolyn has a reputation as an innovative and collaborative employee committed to high-quality and excellent work. Therefore, whenever a challenging internal project comes up or when there's a new opportunity to partner with the community, Carolyn's name is always mentioned as an ideal participant. And whereas Carolyn has a positive spirit, always saying yes to a new project or opportunity, she led significant initiatives in 2019, including serving as an interim program manager at the Civic Park Community Center and again at the Shadlands Art Center, leading the development of the Arts and Recreation Department Strategic Plan and a new customer service program, creating the first Arts and Rec Annual Report, and delivering essential analysis for your parks, your future initiative. And whereas Carolyn, previously in her time with the city, completed the Contra Costa Leadership Program, led the transition to a new arts and recreation program registration system, produced results of the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study, and participated in the Internal Communications and Core Care Teams. And Carolyn's consistently demonstrated the city's core values of respect, integrity, excellence, teamwork, and creativity throughout her career. Her commitment to the city organization and the community epitomizes these values. And whereas the city of Walnut Creek sincerely appreciates the outstanding contributions made by Carolyn Jackson in her career with the city and wishes to commend and pay her special tribute. Now therefore, I, Kevin Wilk, Mayor of the City of Walnut Creek, on behalf of the city council on this 19th day of January 2021, do hereby recognize Carolyn Jackson's accomplishments, dedicated efforts, and commitment to the city and name her along with Sebastian Paulson as the Rosie Cohen Employee of the Year for 2019. Kevin Wilk, Mayor, please join me in giving Carolyn a big round of applause as well. Thank you both so much for your dedication. It is sincerely appreciated, not just by the staff and not just by the city council, but by everybody in Walnut Creek. Thank you so much. And this brings us to a recognition for the Contra Costa Council on Homelessness. And I believe Leslie Gleason, Executive Director of Trinity Center, will make the presentation.
There we go. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Wilk, Mayor Pro Tem Francois, all council members, city staff, and community members. Tonight is my privilege on behalf of the Contra Costa County Council on Homelessness to recognize the city of Walnut Creek as the county's outstanding jurisdiction in 2020. City leadership at all levels and including elected and staff officials are deeply attuned to and concerned about people experiencing homelessness. They have turned this support into concrete action and provided financial support as demonstrated by its long-term support of Trinity Center, which it is also my honor to serve as Executive Director of, through coordination with the state military to authorize winter emergency shelter accommodations at the Armory, through development of the Walnut Creek Police Department's Homeless Outreach Team, otherwise known as the HOP team, through engagement of a county corps outreach team, quick and effective public health responses during the COVID pandemic, and collaborating with numerous partners on St. Paul's Commons and Apartments, a long time in the development, but now gracing the city's streets and providing safe homes, the development of 44 units of affordable housing close to downtown and the Walnut Creek Bart Station, known as St. Paul's Commons Apartments. The Walnut Creek Homeless Task Force comprised of citizens, local and county officials, police department representatives, and service providers, leads the community's discussions, educational forums, and supports action and programs to act locally and serve as an example of community engagement to address homelessness. In addition to welcoming the presence of Trinity Center to provide critical day services for vulnerable people, including winter emergency shelter and safe parking services, Walnut Creek officials at all levels strive to ensure that even the most vulnerable persons in Walnut Creek are treated with compassion and able to access resources to address their needs and chart a course forward. Walnut Creek, I'm proud to say, puts money where its mouth is, committing local funds and state and federal resources at its disposal to support homeless services, not only at Trinity Center. In the face of the COVID-19 pandemic, staff and council have worked together to be proactive, responsive, and creative in meeting the new financial and public health challenges of persons experiencing homelessness and indeed the entire community. But a picture speaks a thousand words. So let me share some pictures. There we go. So Walnut Creek is being recognized as the 2020 Council on Homelessness's outstanding jurisdiction, based on its recognition as bringing together government, business, and community leaders who take an active and collaborative approach to addressing homelessness. And this is the house that that collaboration built. This is St. Paul's Commons Apartments at 1888 Trinity Avenue, the apartment's Trinity Center and community meeting space that will be available for all as soon as the pandemic's over. Here's the pathway to Trinity Center and the welcoming door that members of our community in need can come through each day to get the services that they need in collaboration with Walnut Creek officials, businesses, and residents who join forces to meet the needs of their vulnerable neighbors. We do this at Trinity Center through safety net services, member advocacy, COVID precautions these days, and emergency shelter options. Here's our beautiful space. And more, storage lockers, very important. And the most important of all some days, a hot shower, the ability to do your laundry, and clean, safe, secure restroom facilities. During COVID-19, Walnut Creek really stepped up and made sure that Trinity Center and other providers had the supplies and support they needed to make sure that everybody in the community, especially those who were sheltering in place at Trinity Center as their only home, could stay safe. And of course, the hallmark of our collaboration has been the development of St. Paul's Commons. So that every member of the community, people and our puppies alike, have a safe place to be. These three floors house 44 beautiful families in studio and one-bedroom apartments, Trinity Center on the first floor, and the availability of community public rooms for the future. It's a gorgeous space. It's a beautiful contribution to the community and a testimony to what Walnut Creek residents, business leaders, government officials, and faith communities like St. Paul's Episcopal Church can do when we work together. We don't do it alone. Our members and clients are surrounded by a whole village that helps keep them supported and on the path forward. So thank you and congratulations to Walnut Creek. It was my honor to be able to recognize you as the Contra Costa County Council on Homelessness's outstanding jurisdiction.
Great. Thank you, Leslie. We'll get back to the screen here. Terrific. Well, Trinity Center is such a valuable resource, and I appreciate the tour that you gave me a few months ago throughout the center. And yes, we look forward to the pandemic ending and being able to be used as well. Do any council members have any questions of Leslie or staff on this? Okay, seeing none. Leslie, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So next we have a presentation regarding the Kinder Morgan Pipeline update, and I'm going to introduce Heather Ballinger, who will take it from here. Heather?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wilk and City Council for the record. My name is Heather Ballinger, and I'm the Public Works Director for the City of Walnut Creek. So at your last council meeting on December 15th, Kinder Morgan provided an update on the pipeline leak that occurred in November of last year. We wanted to provide you with another update and fill you in on the remediation efforts and the next steps. So here tonight to provide us with that update is Captain Todd Ajari. He's with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife Office of Spill Prevention and Response, OSPAR. So just by way of background, on November 20th, Kinder Morgan reported to Cal OES a loss in pressure due to a damaged pipeline that resulted in gasoline spilling into the soil. That first week, Kinder Morgan fixed the leak, and they thought that only a minimal amount of gasoline was spilled. On December 3rd, the Department of Fish and Wildlife Office of Spill Prevention and Response received a report of a sheen or a discharge of gasoline from unknown origins. And it was in the Contra Costa County Flood Control Drainage Channel or the San Ramon Bypass, and it was located just south of Ignatius Valley Road by the Iron Horse Trail, kind of by Civic Park. So initially, we thought that those two incidents were unrelated. But as it turns out, in early December, it was estimated that 750 to 1,000 barrels, which is around 31,000 to 42,000 gallons of product, was released, and it had daylighted into the channel at that location. So once this spill was significant or identified as significant, personnel from OSPAR's Field Response Team were deployed to manage the incident along with other agencies. So as of January 17th, they've estimated that about 420 barrels or about 18,000 gallons have been recovered from the location. They've been doing ongoing health and safety monitoring, including air monitoring and water quality while they're doing the remediation effort. So tonight, as I mentioned, Captain Ajari will provide a broad update on the current situation. He'll discuss two ongoing investigations from OSPAR and from the state fire marshal. He'll also discuss public safety, air monitoring, wildlife, and eventually the handoff from OSPAR to the water board. Also in attendance tonight is Alan Ford. He is the Vice President of Public Affairs at Kinder Morgan, and he's on the Zoom call to answer questions. Also on the call is Tara Fitzgerald. She is with US EPA, and she is the federal on-scene coordinator. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Captain Ajari.
Ajari, thank you.
Ajari, Ajari, thank you.
She got through half of what I was gonna say there. That was pretty good. We got the same notes, Heather. Good job. Good evening. My name's Todd Ajari. I'm the captain with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. We're upset in the state for this response. Our mission here at the Iron Horse Trail Incident is to continue with public safety being the priority and focus while working towards the best achievable protection of the environment through a continued unified response. Our northern field response consists of wildlife officers, scientists, and technical specialists. We've been engaged in the response since it was first reported, as Heather said, in November 20th. Once it was determined that the spill was 42,000 gallons, we formed a unified command to lead mitigation and public outreach efforts. Again, reiterate some of the stuff Heather mentioned. The unified command includes my agency, US EPA, and Kinder Morgan as the responsible party for the incident. In addition, the city and county have been working with us, playing an active role in the response through liaison and public information functions. And want to thank them for their engagement and for advocating for the residents' interest. With their help, we were able to have virtual meetings with residents in the immediate area. In addition to daily outreach with those residents, we've also maintained an incident webpage to keep the public up to date on operations. The cleanup response effort includes liquid extraction using vacuum trucks and vapor extraction. So far, again, 420 barrels or 70,640 gallons has been collected. That's an approximate amount. Further plans are being developed to remove the remaining petroleum from the ground. These plans include installation and monitoring wells to locate and remove additional product. Okay, so OSPAR and the state fire marshal are conducting ongoing investigations. The location of the incident began where there was a trudy system near the Kinder Morgan Pipeline, and the pipeline in that area lost integrity and the crack was found. The impact in 7 was repaired, returned to service on December 9th, operating at a 20% reduction. After thorough testing approved by the state, marked the fire marshal, they began to began return service to it. Public safety is a priority during this response. We have, we've set up 24-hour monitoring in public areas around the channel, and to date, no hazardous levels of volatile organic compounds or VSCs, benzene or lower explosive limits from air monitoring have been detected in the community. A sheen in the channel and odors at the Walnut Creek School were reported to Unified Command during moderate rains on January 4th. Air and surface water monitoring and visual inspection was conducted soon after. No sheen was documented, though the flow had increased the channel due to heavy rains. Only low VSCs were detected. Staff will continue to monitor this location and is working directly with the school. Impacts wildlife so far have been minimal. Our crew has only collected 17 small dead fish in the working area of the channel. We are trying to determine the species type still. Tainment boom has been deployed downstream to keep patrolling from the natural creek bed. And to this point, no sheen has been observed there. Moving forward, as part of this command, we will continue to monitor cleanup operations, wildlife observation activities, and product quantification, working closely with federal and local agencies and corporate partners to ensure the safety of the community and maximum protection of the resources. Once the majority of petroleum is removed, hospital transfer authority to the state water board for further mitigation. We are working with the water board now as they do have oversight of underground recovery efforts. That's their area of expertise. At this point, we actually have, from the last meeting we had with the residents, we did do had, we completed the questions and answered them. There's 14 pages of answers. If you, if the council has something specific they would like to hear or ask, I could do my best to answer those or maybe with the partners, Kinder Morgan and EPA, maybe they can help out as well.
Thank you, Todd. Council members, do any questions? I see Cindy's hand. Cindy Silva, better be.
Yes, now that there are two Cindys, we keep it very clear. So Councilmember Silva here. Thank you very much for being here this evening and to all of the partners from the US EPA and Kinder Morgan and other agencies. Is the gasoline in a pool beneath the channel? Or is it just infiltrated through rock and soil and just kind of all over the place?
So that's what they're determining, the location through installation of wells. They can, first of all, check to see if the fuel is in that location, if it is and monitoring it, and if they can remove fuel on that site or extract vapors. It is, I would say, it's traveled from the initial location all the way down to Broadway there, and it followed a subsurface sewer line, not the sewer line, but And it followed a subsurface sewer line, not the sewer line, but in the gravel. And the gravel they put underneath it to support the pipeline as they put it underground. So that made a more porous avenue for the gasoline to travel.
And you said they've extracted about 420 barrels and there were 750 to 1,000 barrels of gasoline estimated to be there. So are we maybe halfway through this process?
If the calculations are correct, that would be accurate.
And is it slower now because now they're having to look further and further for it?
Right, initially in the beginning, it's the initial phase of an incident, you're going to collect a lot more oil or petroleum, whatever the product is, because you kind of have a better idea where it's at or it's coming from a specific spot. Like in this case, we had it expressing out into the channel, so we had a place to start. As, you know, as in anything, as you have less, it's gonna, we're gonna see less. And right now, we are seeing less come out. We'll see what happens with rains coming up and how that affects it. The gasoline sits on top of the water, so as the water level rises underneath subsurface, it will float that gasoline and may bring it to points where it'll express itself again. At that time, we have the booms in place and we're hopefully going to be able to minimize any impact with that.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Haskew.
As a part of this process, is Kinder Morgan or anybody checking on the integrity of the pipe along the way? There's a long piece of gas transportation going on. And I'm sure they didn't expect the first break. Are they checking to make sure we should be aware of any potential new breaks?
It is my understanding that they do inspect those lines. It's pretty detailed, the smart picking. It's a device that goes through the tube and checks for anomalies inside the pipeline. I don't know, if Kinder Morgan, if you're on, if you'd like to speak more professionally to that than I can, that would be great. But I think the answer is yes.
Councilwoman, this is Alan Ford, Vice President of Kinder Morgan. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us to participate this evening. So as Captain is correct, we have an integrity program at Kinder Morgan where we do a variety of above-ground checks on our pipeline as well as running inspection tools through the pipeline on a regular basis. Now, while the investigation is ongoing into the specific cause of this incident, some preliminary indications are that it was impacted by roots of a tree. So we know, and I think the city is aware, that we're looking at some other additional locations along Broadway where other trees, and I think everyone in Walnut Creek knows there are a lot of trees in different areas. So whether or not those trees are impacting the line or not, will be part of our ongoing integrity reviews. But we are very cognizant and we'll be looking at that through a variety of means. Now, that doesn't mean that trees will necessarily have to be removed. But that's something that we want to look at and will, of course, work with all of the regulatory authorities on specifically how we would address any of those impacts.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Protem Francois.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Captain Ajari and Mr. Ford for being on tonight. I think for Captain Ajari, I'm just, or maybe for the woman from EPA that's on the phone, I'm trying to get a sense for what agency oversight or role will there be into the cause of this leak? Will there be a report prepared at the end of the day by your agency captain or another governmental agency that'll say, we investigated it and here's what we determined the cause of the leak was?
Yes, our agency, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, is currently investigating the incident and will prepare reports. And once the case is adjudicated, then the public will be able to be requested through Public Records Request Act. In addition, the State Fire Marshal also is preparing a case and a report as well. And those are the two state agents that will be preparing reports. And I would assume the EPA is in the same boat.
That's good. That's great to hear. And then in terms of the ongoing monitoring, Mr. Ford said they periodically run some sort of device through the line to make sure that it's not compromised. Is there some governmental agency oversight or regulation of that? How does that work?
I can take that, Captain, if you'd like me to. So the State Fire Marshal is the Oversight Agency over Pipeline Safety in California. And that runs through the US Department of Transportation, Office of Pipeline Safety, Pipeline and Hazard Material Safety Administration. But we are required to file annual reports with the agency, so they are regularly inspecting. And at some of our community meetings, and now Heather, you've been part of those meetings where Jim Hostler, I think his Assistant State Fire Marshal, has talked about the regulatory oversight that they have over the ongoing operations of the pipeline. This is separate from the incident, where they also have a role here, but they are regularly inspecting pipelines all across California, including ours.
Thank you both.
And yes, Councilmember Darling.
I'm going to follow up. Thank you all for coming and talking tonight. And I just wanted to ask, following on to what Councilmember Francois asked, at the conclusion of the cleanup operation, if you're not able to capture all the product, is the penalty phase, does it move through the regional board's authority or Fish and Wildlife's authority? And then how does that part of the process work?
So each state agency has their own authority that they will follow up on. Water Board, like I mentioned earlier, they kind of deal with underground and what takes place with that stuff. We, our lane is generally patrolled on the surface and what gets out there, managing the response and cleanup and investigating the cause.
As far as any financial penalties, that's likely to come more from the regional board?
No, it depends on the agencies, the sections that are used, the statutes that are used or regulations that they have. I'm not familiar with their penalties, but each agency has their own regulations that they use to pursue penalties or damages.
Okay, and do you anticipate being able to recover most of the product? Or are you confident, how confident are you in your ability to get there?
I think it's good, very good that we got 420 barrels now. I'm not, again, I'm not the expert for the geology of subsurface, how to find the remainder of that fuel. There'll probably be a better direction towards the Water Board. The intent is to be here until it's not a threat. You know, for Fish and Wildlife, we focus on Fish and Wildlife and that's our focus. And then once it gets past that, you know, primary is public safety. But we kind of move out of the way once it's no longer an emergency. Not gonna, we kind of deem it's not going to affect the wildlife. It's not an imminent danger to wildlife or the resources. And Water Board follows up the remainder, testing the soil, mitigating the remainder of that issue.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for all your efforts, everyone.
Looks like that's the Councilmember comments. Susie, I see that somebody has their hand up in the attendees because this is such an important item for the public. I think we should, let's see if these are questions that are directly related to Kinder Morgan that could be answered.
Okay, I do see two hands raised. I will go ahead and bring it in.
And for the public, these are questions specifically related and only related to the Kinder Morgan Pipeline.
Peggy and Phil Dodds.
Okay, you're on, Peggy and Phil.
Okay, this Peggy Dodds. I live at 102 Greenway Drive. I am directly connected to the pipeline spillage. We had many incidents of lack of communication, a lot, actually, just, I'd call it outright lying from Kinder Morgan at the beginning of this. At this point, I'm very concerned about, or continue to be concerned since November for my own home safety and the home of my neighbors, as well as the sub growth of the spillage. Appreciate the fact we've got 420 barrels in. I still find it difficult to believe that 1.2 miles were spared before we ever knew anything and that Kinder Morgan couldn't monitor that to know where that was going once they knew November 20th that they had a major spillage and they weren't looking for that jet propulsion fuel. My biggest concern at this point is real clarity and oversight. I think the city of Walnut Creek, in all honesty, you guys dropped the ball. You didn't invite us to the last meeting. And no one has ever reached out until mid-December to even let the people who pay our taxes and are the citizens of Walnut Creek. So I'd like all of you to be very aware that there's a huge group of us that are concerned about our own properties, our lives and our futures with this oil spill. My question at this point is, what is Kinder Morgan paying to the city of Walnut Creek? What financial benefit does the city of Walnut Creek get from Kinder Morgan by allowing this very dangerous pipeline to go through our city and impact our citizens? In 2004, we lost five citizens or five workers and citizens in a home was completely devastated. The high school was completely impacted with a lockdown. What is the financial gain to our city? And if there is a huge financial gain or a minimal financial gain, what is it up to the city to be able to say, we don't want you in our backyards? You've shown to be negligent. You've shown to be compromised in how you present yourself to the citizenry and we'd like you to leave. I realize this is a pipeline from Martinez to San Jose, but we're one city. And I don't understand why we would need to continue this relationship. Perhaps you can tell me what we're being paid to have this? Because I feel like the money is a big process.
Thank you, Peggy.
For our citizens.
Thank you. Actually, let's do this. Let's go through the public, let's go through any comments the public may have and then staff or Kinder Morgan can answer them all collectively. So if we can bring the next one in.
Sure, next speaker is user DS.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is David Steyer and I live the next block over, but also our property backs up onto the canal. We live at 80 Norland Drive. And, you know, I went over the 14 pages of answers to the last discussion. And the thing I'm kind of concerned about is that the smell of gasoline, you know, I'm less concerned about environmental health risks. It's more just simply, who's going to want to buy a house if you have the potential of smelling gasoline in your backyard or inside your house? And I feel like although the report said this is beyond the scope of unified command, I certainly think it is within the scope of the City of Walnut Creek to represent homeowners to query and find out what is the standard practice for gasoline that is a subterranean leak, you know, of the certain characteristics that currently exist. You know, you guys are doing a lot of work. It's all appreciated. But in the end, you're going to leave and we're going to be here. And I don't want to be smelling gasoline in the back of my house, plain and simple. And I don't want to have to hire some lawyer to say, hey, could you force somebody to give us a report that gives us information about the potential impacts to our house value, quality of life, potential health concerns? Because there is this gas that is continuing to remain there and I'm certain it will always remain there at certain levels. We need some experts that will actually submit an independent report to the homeowners, to the city, that says, here is the expected damage. And, you know, I think the only other thing I would like to see is just a bit more information about, you know, there's going to be 50 wells that are going to be, you know, built and we're going to locate them and it's a time-consuming process. So I'd just like to get more detail about that in the future, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have one more comment.
Yes, next speaker is user REVVL5G.
Here we go. My name's Pete Bennett. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm very familiar with Kinder Morgan. In fact, I'm also very familiar with their predecessor, Southern Pacific Transportation. I'm the litigant in Bennett versus Southern Pacific. I'm an arson victim whose truck exploded on 6/83 months before the pipeline. And then the pipeline blew up and the line was severed in 2004 by a guy named Joe Driscoll. And seven months later, his girlfriend, which was, I mean, his sister, which turned out to be my friend, we had a date, instead she was found dead. I've called Kinder Morgan. I've called federal agencies. I've called the FBI. My family in Utah got killed and my friend was just found dead in a creek in Martinez. That's the second Walnut Creek person. And I know the woman missing in Joshua Tree. All right? And my attorney was killed over the summer. I've had enough of the people near me dying. I just found out about another one that died six years ago. I'm growing tired of this. I'm growing tired of Kinder Morgan. I've called Southern Pacific successors, BNSF. I've called the Amtrak police because I linked together my explosion to Amtrak accidents, to Philip Ann Schutz, the chairman of the board, whose Los Angeles Laker employee was killed. His name's Toby. And the same people that I dealt with 30 years ago are AEG Presents in the Nashville bombing. So you guys, what about Pete? I don't even get any homeless services. I'm denied food. I've been threatened with arrest for asking for food. And then you beat me up in Walnut Creek, nearly choked me to death, and I ended up with a stroke. Okay, you stole my trucks. You beat me up. You throw me through windows and you blame me for everything under the sun. It's gaspipelinerexplosions.com and hashtag PG.
Thank you, Pete.
Mayor, we do have another hand raised.
Okay, let's bring them in and then we will close the comment for this particular item.
Okay, so we have Donald Henderson.
Donald, you're on.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I have a couple of easy questions, hopefully. So I'm very curious about how the pipe broke. I know it was supposed to have been a tree, but so was there a joint that the tree root leaned on too hard? I mean, it's really hard for me to wrap my mind around that a tree broke the pipe itself. And so, I mean, if it did break the pipe itself, I mean, what are the dimensions of the pipe that can break that easily from a tree? And I'm also curious, did you take pictures of the repair or of the breakage or the tree invasion of the pipe? So I think that's about it. So I think that's about it.
Thank, thank you, Donald. Okay, so we had a couple of these questions that let's see, we can start to get the answers on. So let's start with Kinder Morgan and the questions that came that were more in your ballpark were, how do we take care of the, the gas smell? Report to homeowners as well as how did the pipe break?
Okay, so regarding the odors that the resident referenced, and I was out on site today and, and the, the odors have significantly reduced over the last several weeks. Now, if the wind is blowing in a, in a certain direction, you, you can still smell from time to time. So there is still odor. Part of the recovery effort that the captain referenced, and we are still in recovery at this point, is vapor extraction. And we have vapor extraction set up currently. We're, we're adding another vapor extraction, more vapor extraction equipment, which will again further reduce those smells. And the, the goal and the target is that there, that those smells will be eliminated over time. And what's the timeline on that? We're still, we're still recovering product in the area. And, but, but vapor recovery, the smell, we completely understand that. And we're working with the unified command on the best ways to specifically address that. There was a question about the, the pipe and the incident. I, I will say that is under active investigation by the state fire marshal. It's a 10-inch pipe, but I think it was one of the, how big was the pipe? But to the question about pictures, yes, there, there were pictures taken and that will, that's part of the state fire marshal's investigation and review. And was there one more? Oh, I want, did want to comment on the notification. I've heard it a couple of times that the city was not active in, in, in the, the informational process. And I will say, I can only speak for Kinder Morgan, but early on in this process, the city was actually out in front on a number of things. The city asked us to deliver communications to residents. They asked us to appear at a council meeting. They asked us to respond to specific questions, particularly Heather. I know when we, we mentioned this to the mayor early on, I think it was probably within an hour or two that, that Public Works was in contact with us following up specifically. So within the parameters of, of the authority that the city has over pipelines, which we know it's not direct oversight, they were, they were quickly in communication with us and asking us to do a number of things to communicate. And I'm not saying everything was perfect. And I think as the unified command came into place, there was a specific process that, that was established that the city became part of later to better communicate. And as was mentioned by Captain, I think we've answered 50 questions and 14 or 15 pages of questions and I'm sure we'll be doing more of that. The sign on the, on Iron Horse Trail, that was the city, the impetus to the city to get that done. So I just wanted to address that because I, I think the city has been very directly asking us to be particularly responsive to the citizens that are closest to us in the incident site or the location before product extraction.
Thank you, Alan. I think the council member Silva has a quick question.
There was another question that was asked, which was, what was the size of the tree? And I'm not sure if it's Kinder Morgan or our engineering staff, public work staff that will know that and girth, because tree roots can be as large as tree limbs. So I don't know how large this tree was.
I, I don't have the exact height of the tree. I thought he had asked about the size of the pipe, but.
It was both.
Yeah, so, so I, we can, councilman, we'll get you that information. I know we know that. I just don't have it directly with me.
Does our public works director, Heather, do you know?
I don't know the exact like diameter of the tree, but it was a good sized oak tree. It was in very good health, very large, so probably a hundred year old oak tree. Well, Steve just texted me, our city engineer, because he was out there. He said it was a 34 inch diameter.
So that means the root structure was also substantial.
Yes.
Roots can lift concrete. It doesn't surprise me, it can break a tenant.
Heather, don't go off mute yet because I think the other question was more in the ballpark for the city of Walnut Creek, which is essentially what's the benefit to the city of Walnut Creek for having the Kinder Morgan pipeline come through us?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and tackle that one. Dan Buckshire, city manager. First off, I just want to say for those that live nearby that we share your concerns and are sympathetic to the challenges we've been going through. I'll just share, granted, it's been a few weeks now, but when I went out to the site firsthand to go view it, the smell of the fuel was overwhelming and you really couldn't be there that long. And that was with wearing a COVID mask while on site. So I know it's, sounds like it's improved, but no doubt you should be concerned about this. And so just know that as Mr. Four noted from Kinder Morgan, we are trying to get the word out. We are, we are participating with all of the different agencies that are involved. As was noted, city of Walnut Creek is not the lead agency. We don't have jurisdiction over the other agencies. The OSPO is the lead, the US EPA is involved, other regulatory agencies will be involved. But I do want you to know that the city of Walnut Creek does have a seat at the table and we are expressing our interests for all of you who live here at Walnut Creek. With respect to the, what's the financial benefit to the city? I can state that it's negligible to nonexistent. I was just double checking to see if we received what's called a franchise fee. I don't believe we do. If we do, it's very nominal. Effectively, the federal government preempts our local control because this crosses county boundaries, city boundaries. In some instances, pipelines cross state boundaries. And so it's really a matter of how to transport fuel that is needed. This fuel obviously goes to the San Jose airport, if not elsewhere. And that fuel is needed, given our current, you know, fossil fuel driven combustible engines. So that said, you know, the other alternatives are not very good in terms of transporting fuel either by truck or by rail. Pipeline generally has proven to be a very safe mode of transportation. So unfortunately, we don't have jurisdiction over this matter. We can, I suppose we could write a letter asking somebody to move the pipeline, but I'm not sure candidly that it would do any bit of good. So I believe it was Ms. Dudd who or Dodd who had asked those questions. So financially, no, but we are monitoring this closely. It's encouraging to see that a fair bit of the fuel has been recovered so far and we hope that the efforts and expect that the efforts will continue in earnest to get this remediated as soon as possible.
Anything else that Kinder Morgan folks, oh, it looks like before that, Mayor Protem Francois has a question or comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Following up on, on city manager Buckshire, Mr. Four, just if you could speak generally to, I imagine that Kinder Morgan has legal rights through an easement that traverse our city and other cities that don't involve the city of Walnut Creek. So it's like akin to a property right that we could not infringe on or interfere with. We're not a party to that agreement at all.
I believe that is the, the case. I would defer to Mr. Four if he wants to confirm that. But yes, we, we don't have any involvement in that activity. That is either through the state or federal government that oversees that permitting activity.
Before we leave this part, if Todd or Alan, any further comments? Anything else on this one? Thank you for being here, by the way. And obviously this is highly concerning to our residents, especially the ones that are in closest proximity. We really do feel that, you know, this is something that we want to continue to be right on top of.
For the questions. I, I just, I'd just like to say, I, I understand, I understand that everything, with everything that's going on in the last year, to add this into the residents having to deal with this, I understand it's not pleasant one bit. And I understand there's a lot of questions of what took place in the past. And that's part that kind of goes towards investigation. We're trying to figure that stuff out too. But what's important to understand and know is that right now, the city's involved, the county's involved, Kinder Morgan's involved, federal and state agencies, we're all involved trying to move forward and make things better for the residents in that area as well as an environment. None of us want this to go on, you know, forever. We want it done as soon as possible. And that's, that's the goal. We're trying to work that out.
Thank you, thank you. Please keep us, can you keep us informed? And perhaps we can have another update and I'll work with Heather Ballinger on this. If we can have another update maybe in a month or whenever you feel it's appropriate, but at least within a month. And if, if anybody from the public thought of something else while we had, after we had closed public communications, please feel free to email me at mayor@walnut-creek.org and we will make sure that your email gets forwarded to the right person to answer any questions that you might have thought of after we closed the public communication portion of this. All right, thank you very much, Todd and Alan for being part of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull any item for discussion? I'm looking. Okay, does any member of the public wish to comment on an item on the consent calendar? And that's the consent calendar only. Please raise your hand or press star nine if you're connected by audio only. If you would like to provide a public comment. And for those who desire to provide public comment on a consent calendar item specifically, that's this agenda item two right now, please raise your hand now. And as a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been and will be posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. At this time, I will ask the city clerk, if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments.
Mayor, we do have a couple of hands raised. I'm not sure if one, though it may be related to the Kinder Morgan presentation we just had.
Okay, I guess we'll find out.
Okay. Sorry, the first speaker is Matt Iota.
Okay. Hello, Matt. Please go ahead. Looks like you're on mute. Give you a second to sort that out. Hello?
Is that better now?
Yes, we can hear you now. We can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. If you have another speaker on your TV on.
Okay. My name is Anne Mattiotta and I am, and my question is actually regarding the previous item on the agenda, the spill, the gasoline spill of Kinder Morgan. And we are, I own the property at the end of Bradley Avenue where they're accessing the, the canal. And as the property owner, we do not live there. We live out of state. We were never informed by the city of Walnut Creek about any of this. It was only through conversation with an adjoining neighbor here about a week and a half ago that we knew anything about it. My concern is that the city of Walnut Creek did drop the ball in notifying property owners. And, you know, it's very easy if they went to the tax records, they would have our mailing address. They could have let us know what was going on. So that's my first concern. My second concern is how does Kinder Morgan or the EPA plan to monitor any lateral flow of the gasoline from the gravel under the canal out towards any adjoining properties? And how they plan to do that? And what length of time do they plan on doing that for? That's right now my, my biggest concern.
Okay. Thank you. Again, this, this portion was provided on a consent calendar. Write in an email to mayor@walnut-creek.org. Let's.
Okay.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have any other public comments on the consent calendar?
We do. We'll go ahead and bring in Carl Hirsch.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, so this is unrelated to the Kinderborn Morgan. My name is Dr. Carl Hirsch.
Excuse me. Dr. Hirsch, is this something for public communication or for the consent calendar?
Uh, public communication.
Okay, that's, that's next. Right now, we're on the consent calendar still.
Okay, sorry.
On this, you can call, raise your hand at the next item. Thank you.
Are you ready for a motion?
Okay, I am ready for a motion.
All right, I would be happy to make a motion that we approve all of item two consent calendar A through J.
I will second that motion with the fact that there was a, changes to the minutes that were given to us this afternoon.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Suzie, can you please read the roll?
Council member Haskew.
Aye.
Council member Silva.
Aye.
Council member Darlene.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Francois.
Aye.
And Mayor Will.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, we have public communications. So this portion of the meeting is reserved for comments on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. Request clarification or refer the item to staff. Consistent with section 9.5 of the city council handbook, 30 minutes will be allocated at this time for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communications for items not on the agenda will be, be provided at the end of the meeting if necessary. So does any member of the public wish to provide public comments at this time? Please use the raised hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only. If you would like to provide a public comment. For those who desire to provide public comments on an item on the agenda, please raise your hand now. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral comments. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. At this time, I will note that the time is 7:08 and we will take public comments on items not on the agenda until approximately 7:38 and then the remainder of any such comments at the end of the meeting. City clerk, are there any members of the public who would like to provide comments?
We do have several speakers. First speaker is Diane Crowley Young.
Hello.
Hi Diane.
Hi, I'm Diane Crowley Young. Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year.
Thanks. 2021 will be the 11th anniversary of Walnut Creek's annual community service day. This event was founded in 2011 by Cindy Silva, who continues to chair it to this day. I'm an original steering committee member and for the past few years, I've also been co-chair of this wide. I'm an original steering committee member, and for the past few years, I've also been co-chair of this wild and wonderful event. Over the years, we've enjoyed ongoing support and active participation by the city of Walnut Creek and by every member of our current city council, for which we are very grateful. Normally, we begin the day with a pancake breakfast and then move projects to projects throughout the city and complete 50 or more projects with as many as 1,500 volunteers. Last October, in the face of the pandemic, we chose to focus on just one of our original and ongoing partners, the Contra Costa Food Bank, for the safety of our community. We created a citywide food drive and set up multiple collection points around the city. The results were astounding. Our citizens donated over 19 tons of food and almost $19,000 to date. Everyone came together to give generously to those in need. Sadly, there's still great foods insecurity in our community. This year, for Community Service Day 2021, we will come together again for the greater good without jeopardizing individual safety. We're planning to hold two citywide food drives, one in April. We're still working with the food bank on that exact date. And another one on what's been our traditional day, the second Saturday in October, which is October 9. Please mark your calendars as our dates are finalized and plan to join us. Working together, we will be a powerful force fighting hunger in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Next speaker is Alexis Hall.
It's actually Ton. Hi. Hello, city council members. My name's Ton Hall. And my son, Miles Hall, was killed on June 2nd, 2019 while having a mental health crisis. I want to make it clear that I don't enjoy coming into these meetings and speaking in front of you twice a month for the last year and a half. I come here because I want there to be a non-police response to mental health calls. Miles' death could have been avoided if I could have called someone besides the police to assist me getting help with my son. I'm here because I don't want a family, another family member to have to maneuver a broken system that criminalizes our loved ones with mental health challenges by calling the police when they aren't trained to help. Last week, city manager Dan Buckshai mentioned that he didn't think it was appropriate to name the countywide mental health program after Miles because it wasn't, felt it wasn't fair to others who lost their lives to mental illness. Unfortunately, people die every day from mental illness. But in this case, our family and community have been fighting as a result of what happened to Miles to ensure the safety for others. But we are glad that the city of Walnut Creek is advocating for a 24 program. We are confused and saddened as why, as to why you're advocating for this pilot program not to be named after Miles, who is a reason that this pilot program is being considered and getting so much attention. City Council, please know that it is our intention to get this program passed and successfully implemented to save lives. This program will benefit so many, and we ask that it be named after Miles. Dan, I'm not sure if you're aware that Assemblywoman Rebecca Barakian is working on a bill getting passed called the Miles Hall Lifeline Act in the state of California that would direct non-emergency, 911 calls to a 988 number instead. This number would allow individuals who are having a mental health episode to avoid law enforcement when they need help. We hope Kevin, Llewellyn, Cindy Darling make the Miles Hall pilot program as a priority as discussed in their campaign promise. We hope that you will push to have it named after him. And so that is something that is very important, obviously, to the community. Not only just to myself, obviously, as our son is not here with us anymore, but to ensure safety for others. And, and this is also our, the fight that we are doing is getting a lot of traction. We're getting national attention, and it really would be great with the work that you guys have already done, that you also consider, you know, this being named after Miles. So thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Ton.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Next speaker is Catherine Wally.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Catherine.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. My name is Catherine Wally, and I'm a resident of Walnut Creek. My pronouns are she/her. In light of heightened awareness of white supremacist extremist groups in our country, I urge those in leadership to take care not to use the actions of these groups as rationale for ramping up the policing and surveillance of civil rights protesters, activists, and organizers. As a community, we cannot allow the actions in fear of white supremacists to result in policing tactics that suppress dissent against unjust systems that are themselves rooted in white supremacy. This conversation must be had, given the track record our city has had in overpolicing civil rights protesters while also failing to loudly and clearly commit to the cessation of militarized policing tactics in the future. These tactics are dangerous and counterproductive. As was described by the Marshall Project, researchers have spent 50 years studying the way that crowds of protesters and crowds of police behave and what happens when the two interact. One thing that they will tell you is that when police respond by escalating force, wearing riot gear from the start or using tear gasers, tear gas on protesters, it doesn't work. When police escalate force using weapons, tear gas, mass arrests, and other tools to make protesters do what the police want, those efforts can often go wrong, creating the very violence that force was meant to prevent. And make no mistake, excessive force, excessive police presence and surveillance has a chilling effect, curtailing the ability of those wishing to exercise their First Amendment rights through assembly for making their voices heard. Our public officials must do their due diligence to research the literature and history of state violence and police and military tactics used to address civil rights protests in this country, particularly when it comes to protest that addresses racialized police violence. Understanding this context will help them from avoid, help them avoid using the same harmful approaches that have, that have been taken by so many in power across time in our country. In doing so, there is a rich opportunity for those in leadership to finally dispense with relying on a framework of fear and to instead lean into a framework of care. In addition.
Next speaker is Michelle Sheehan.
Okay, you can hear me.
I'm Michelle, yes.
Oh, great. Okay. My name is Michelle Sheehan. I'm a Walnut Creek resident representing Save Seven Hills Ranch. I'm advertising, I'm advertising, I'm addressing you today in reference to one important component of the speaker development proposal for this property. That component is the developers' request that the city execute an irrevocable offer to dedicate right-of-way in regard to Lot A. The request was first brought to city staff and individual council members in April of 2020 and has been discussed in subsequent closed sessions in July and December. According to the city attorney, any final review and consideration by the city council will be included as an open session item. To execute this irrevocable offer would negate the city's 1970 underlying public purpose, which was then and remains to ensure that Pinross Drive not be extended to create a new through public street to the county property to the detriment of the city's residential area. This action did not and does not isolate the county property at Seven Hills Ranch since an entrance to the property already exists at another location. The city sought to protect its neighborhoods from a throughway to the ranch, which has a land use designation of single-family medium, which allows up to 150 housing units. The current developers' proposal offers an even greater reason for the city to retain the protective lot A, as the proposal is for a development of 350 housing units in addition to a 100-bed health center. Speaker partner Troy Born advised us in August that Speaker doesn't care where they enter the property. We are asking the council to take him at his word and not agree to the irrevocable offer to dedicate the city's public, public land to the developer. At the very least, no action should be taken before the county makes the decision on the developers' application for a general plan amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jan Warren.
Hi, Jan.
Oh, boy. Didn't know if I was going to be timed out. Good evening, Mayor Wilk and council members. My name is Jan Warren. I am a resident of Walnut Creek. I chair the Interfaith Climate and Action Network of Contra Costa County. And as a network, we are a working group of the California Interfaith Power and Light. I'd like to begin with a huge thank you for the many long hours you gave last year and already tonight in support of Walnut Creek and its citizens. I'm looking forward this year to the completion and adoption of Sustainability Action Plan. On an evening when President-elect Biden has asked us to mourn over 400,000 lives lost to COVID in the U.S., we remember those who live in polluted neighborhoods and who have borne the heaviest impacts. I want to share Interfaith's climate faith principles I heard on the webinar today with my IPL affiliation, and they're using the acronym of FAITH. F is for frontline, vulnerable, and BIPOC communities. They must be supported first. A is accelerate the transition to a clean energy economy and commit to net zero climate pollution and electricity by 2035 and economy-wide by 2050. I invest in climate resiliency and sustainable infrastructure. T, transition our workforce to clean energy jobs with support and job training for workers. H, creation for promoting protection and conservation of public lands and oceans. May you all have a healthy 2021, and I echo Ton Hall's request to name the mental health response to Miles Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
Next speaker is user REVL5G from a prior comment, I believe it's Pete Bennett.
Go ahead, Pete.
Sorry, I was fiddling with the connector there, you know, should be a, anyways, more comments on Kinder Morgan. I've called them relentlessly and emailed them. Richard Wheatland, former Public Relations Manager.
Pete, Pete, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you here because that was an item on the agenda, and public comment is reserved for items not on the agenda.
Well, I'm about to talk about the murder of my friend. So how about that? Is that a separate issue or not? It is. It is, Kevin. And Kevin, you should never have walked away from me because a couple of weeks after you waffled away, my friend was killed. That's what I see in this town. My witnesses are being killed, Kevin. Deadwitness.com. I have too much loss, way too much loss. You kidnapped my kids. You filed false police documents. You told me when my, watched the fire go down the town of Paradise, and I thought my family was burned alive. They were in the neighborhood where most of the people were killed. That's the kind of pain I suffer. You take my cars. You towed away my truck worth $10,000. You destroyed my laptop, $2,000. You went after my customers. They've been killed. I had a guy with a gun in my computer store in 1995. It's so broken, it's unbelievable. The town's broken. From my viewpoint, I've been homeless because I can't get food from Trinity. They denied me food. Tana Colombo did that. Your friend. You're gonna take the heat on this, Kevin. This is bullshit. That's what it's been for years. And the murder of Lester Garnier in Walnut Creek is a lie. And it leads to Feinstein, it leads to Kamala Harris, and Gavin Newsom. That's what's going on. My friends are being killed, and when they stop getting killed, we'll have a nice party.
Next speaker is Carl Hirsch.
Thanks for coming back, Carl.
All right, here we are.
Here we are.
I'm, good evening. I'm Dr. Carl Hirsch. I am your tenant at 1613 Locust Street at the Locust Street Garage. I've been a happy tenant there for the last 35 years. I'm the last original tenant in those set of stores there, and it's been a great run. So I got a new lease this last August. Thank you very much. It was a two-year lease with no options. Recently, my situation has changed, and I want to sell my practice. And the person who is ready, willing, and able to buy my practice has a loan that's been approved, except for one thing. The lender needs to see a lease that enables the new doctor to have the right to rent the space for the next 11 years. And why 11 years? That's the length of her loan from the lender. So I am calling in all my kids and goodwill and being a great tenant. I've never missed a payment in 35 years. I'm asking you to amend my lease to allow this new doctor to have the right to rent the space for the next 11 years. I greatly appreciate it. The, the, she's basically going to be stepping into my shoes. So there's no problem with the rent being paid. It's been an ongoing business, and she's just going to be taking over what I'm doing. And I'm going to be staying on to ease the transition to make sure everything runs smoothly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl.
Next speaker is call-in user two.
Kevin Work, you say you support Black Lives Matter, yet you never show up to protest. Yet you have your police force assaulting protesters. Yet you only literally use Black Lives Matter for your own personal political gains. You are not a leader. You are a scam. You and your entire, entire council don't give a shit about Black Lives. You guys care more about your own property. You guys care about your own privileges. You guys care about protecting the police department that lacks accountability and justice. You are all a scam. And no, Kevin, your officers are the ones to make comments to us. Your officers approach us to start something. Your officers shoot at us. Just know that the community is all watching, and you too, interim chief Jay, you are a disgrace to everyone for having so many police officers in riot gear present at MLK events and other peaceful Black Lives Matter protests. Please do us a favor and quit your job.
Next speaker is Dani Zuko.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes, you're, you're on.
Please take the, please, I'm Dani, I'm the business owner, 30-year resident Walnut Creek. Please take the leadership role in funding and starting the 24/7 non-police countywide response and name it after Miles Hall. You can name it after Miles Hall. That's the least you can do since Walnut Creek Police Department murdered, murdered him. I want to talk about the police presence for the protest, Black Lives Matter. There's about 50 peaceful protests. We advertise it in the community. And then we were met with about 50 armed police officers in riot gear. There was 38 police vehicles from five different cities under the Walnut Creek garage, from San Ramon, Conqueror, Martinez, Antioch, San Pablo, Contra Costa sheriffs. There was about $50,000 in taxpayers' money that was used for overtime for these officers. And I think that we should, instead of doing that, we should just give that money to the struggling businesses. Maybe like a $5,000 each, you can have helped about 10 restaurants. And Kevin Wilk, you said you're really sternly denounced the Proud Boys. But guess what, Kevin? The Proud Boys are up on the Cortola Bridge twice a week for the last six months. I know that's not your jurisdiction, but guess what? You organized with all the other jurisdictions and all the other cops to come to the Black Lives Matters protest. So I don't know why we need to have paddy wagons, rented vans, cops in military gear for 50 teenage, basically protesters that are peaceful, armed with water bottles, signs, and baby strollers. So Kevin, why are you doing this? Why are you sicking the cops on the, the Black Lives Matter protesters? Maybe it's because you're trying to suppress our First Amendment rights? I can't believe you. Everybody can go to Black Zebra or Contra Costa Press to see all the videos of the, the five different cities coming into Walnut Creek against the.
Next speaker is Lucas Carboni.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to state my agreement with all of the previous commenters on the issue of Black Lives Matter and on the situation with the Hall family. And I would like to devote the rest of my speaking time to a moment of silence to reflect on the loss of Miles Hall.
Next, we have call-in user one.
I found it extremely ironic that Walnut Creek Police Department posted an MLK quote about justice on their social media page on Martin Luther King Jr. Day. He quoted, "True peace is not merely the absence of tension, it is the presence of justice." Today, we still do not have any more presence of justice in our community than we had when MLK was alive. MLK's persecution by the U.S. government and white supremacists of the state are what activists are facing today. Dr. King and other folks in the civil rights movement were stalked, harassed and abused by the police and FBI for years. Today, civil rights movement activists are faced with the same police brutality that the leftists were fighting for racial equality that we're facing when MLK was alive and the same as today. I truly hope that WCPD stops being performative while using MLK's name in an extremely twisted way and starts showing action. Every single person in the police department should be fighting for abolishing qualified immunity so our community and country can begin to have a chance at justice. The Walnut Creek Police Department has failed to protect and serve the community time and time again. WCPD has used lethal force against protesters, has killed two different people in mental health crises in the past eight years, and disproportionately arrests black community members. Despite immense pressure from the public, Walnut Creek City Council has made no substantial changes to ensure that WCPD's reign of terror comes to an end. In the middle of the pandemic, the city council cut 14 arts and rec jobs and approved 1.2 million more for the WCPD budget, loading the budget to 26.74 million. The city has refused to pursue an external investigation.
We're at 7:34. That gives us about four more minutes left for the 30-minute portion of the public communications. That allows us for two more speakers at this time. After the next two speakers, we will be continuing public communication at the end of the meeting. So Suzie, could you bring in the next speaker, please?
Yes, next speaker is Lydia Jung.
Go ahead, Lydia. Lydia, please go ahead. You're on. You may. We can't hear you. It doesn't look like you're on mute, but we still can't hear you. Give it another second here. Are you able to get your microphone on?
I think my microphone is not working anymore.
Now we can hear you.
Yeah, okay. Hello, my name is Lydia Jung and I am here today to remind the city council of their promises to support equity and inclusion through the development of a 24/7 countywide non-police mental health crisis response program named after Miles Hall, since it was his case which brought awareness to the idea of this program. I would also like to continue to emphasize that the public should be made aware of this program through signs with the program's phone number in public places once it is established so that people will be aware that they can contact it instead of the police if they see someone who may be experiencing a mental health crisis. I'd also like to echo Catherine's statements from last meeting that mental health providers can also be complicit in prejudice. And we need to ensure that all first responders receive crisis response and implicit bias training that is grounded in the lived experiences of community members who have struggled against prejudice from police and other public employees. I'd also like to echo Catherine's statements from this meeting about, and the statements from many other commentators about excessive militarized police presence at protests, which can often escalate the violence that it was meant to prevent. And I ask the city council to take meaningful steps toward rethinking their approach to the police presence in the future and ensuring that officers who harass protesters and use other and do other sorts of things that should not be, that do not reflect the city's values or the values of the police departments, ensuring that these officers are fired and face other consequences for their actions that are harmful toward community members. While I do not live in Walnut Creek, I've spent a lot of time in the city for extracurricular activities and a part-time job. And the same can be said of many of my peers in Arinda, and I believe it is probable to think of the steps Walnut Creek takes in terms of police reform and mental health crisis response, both countywide and citywide, will have an impact on the residents and policies of other nearby towns. I urge the city to make this impact positive by prioritizing the development of a comprehensive non-police mental health crisis response program.
And now we're at 7:38, but I said two more speakers four minutes ago, so we'll get that last speaker in right now. And then we'll continue any further ones if they wish to still speak by the end of the meeting.
Okay, so the next speaker is Rin Boigl.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, Rin, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Rin Boigl. My pronouns are the singular they and them. I am a student that lost almost and a protester since the summer of 2020. And as protester, it has become routine for me to witness or see a video of my friends being run over by white supremacists. So it was no surprise that there was a man in a white car attempting to run protesters over during the protest on January 9th. But there was one thing I would like to bring more attention to. According to witnesses, there were two children in that car watching their father drive people over. Now, when I was studying to get my driver's permit, I learned that many of the driving habits new drivers exhibit are picked up from their parents. Considering that, it's safe to assume that the children in that white car are going to grow up believing it's okay to run protesters over because their father did it once. And guess what? He never got in trouble for it. The police questioned him for a single minute before letting him go, maybe less. And that is entirely Walnut Creek PD's fault. If they took adequate action and arrested that man for attempting to murder minors, then those children could have seen the error in what their father did. But Walnut Creek PD has shown time and time again that they are blatantly biased towards protesters and how they respond to them. They say they want to protect and serve, but they fail to bring criminals to justice or to secure the safety of minority groups and their allies. I'm very disappointed in our police department. I expect the city council to recognize this and to make sure that such an inadequate response is never to be seen in Walnut Creek again. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. All right. At this time, anybody that further wishes to speak on public communications, I see a few hands up, so I assume you'll still want to speak. That will happen after our last agenda item, and we will continue public communications at that time. All right, so now we'll move on to council member and staff announcements, reports on activities or requests. Close session announcements. Do we have any close session announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action from closed session this evening.
Thank you. And city manager reports.
Yeah, good evening, Dan Buckshai, city manager. I do have two updates this evening, one related to the pandemic and the other related to crisis response initiative related to mental health. So first off, I did want to note that there was the nationwide vigil or the vigil that was held in Washington, D.C. to recognize the 400,000 lives that have been lost to the pandemic. I just wanted to note that Walnut Creek is participating in that vigil by having our, our marquee sign at the Leshir Center lit up was earlier today and it is still currently. With respect to the pandemic, I would encourage anyone who has not done so already to visit the Contra Costa Health Services website at cchs.org. And in particular, there's a lot of information on the website, but what I wanted to focus on here this evening is information related to the vaccine and the vaccination efforts that are underway, which can be viewed on the website. And I have some additional information that I gleaned from a meeting with the public health officer about a week and a half ago. So as of, I believe, earlier today, roughly 52,000 vaccinations have been administered. 43,000 of those are the first dose, the other roughly 8,600 are for the second dose. This equates to about 3.5% of Contra Costa residents, percentage-wise, have received the first dose and about 0.7% have received the second dose. As of now, there are various tiers that have been outlined. Healthcare workers and those who are 65 or older have been eligible to receive the vaccine and are still eligible to receive the vaccine. More recently, the next tier went into place, which are first responders, which does include police departments. And I do know that some members of our police department have started to receive the vaccine. I know that the fire department received their vaccinations a few weeks ago, given that they're paramedics. They were, they were higher on the priority list because of their healthcare role as well. In addition, many essential workers will be part of the Tier 1B and will be vaccinated either this winter or in early spring. And that is an aside, should at that point include all city workers. There will be some included in the, in the winter rollout and some that were in spring. So that's an update on, on the status. There was an interesting statistic that I thought was really noteworthy that I'd like to share that does offer some hope, given that it's pretty dark right now. We know that the regional stay-at-home orders are in effect. While we don't have any clarity when that will change, I think we should anticipate there will be an effect at least through the end of this month and could last into February, at which point we would likely only move into the purple tier, which was the most restrictive of the prior set of orders before the regional stay-at-home order went into effect. But that is this, as we've seen, a lot of epidemiologists, Dr. Fauci and others have been stating that roughly we need about 70% herd immunity before we can go back to, quote, "normal," if you will, and remove the various societal restrictions that have been put in place. And that's either through vaccine or through those folks who have had the coronavirus and now have the antibodies. That is anticipated to likely occur late summer, fall, or even as, is late into next winter. I think it's likely sometime fall to winter, assuming that all goes well with the vaccine and there are no unpleasant surprises that occur. But what he did state is that once we get closer to 20%, we should be able to lift several of the restrictions, certainly not all, but we should see considerable progress. Roughly 20% of the population, that would include all healthcare workers, all essential workers, and effectively all of those who are in a higher-risk health category. And it does seem very viable at this point that we could be looking at, you know, spring sometime. I don't, I don't want to be any more specific than that because I would just be guessing. But in spring sometime, we could be at that 20% threshold. And we should be able to see society reopen quite a bit more than where we are currently. So obviously, 70% is the overall goal, but 20% is a very important milestone that should be arriving sooner than later with respect to reaching those targets. So that was the update I wanted to provide. Again, for anybody listening, if you would like to receive more information, go to cchs.org. And there is actually, there are forms and information that you can fill out in order to request the vaccine to find out if you are eligible. There's a lot of information there. I'd encourage you to review that. The other item I wanted to provide an update on, and there were some members who spoke about it today, regarding the Community Crisis Response Initiative, or put differently, the 24/7 non-law enforcement response to mental health. So as your council is aware, per prior updates, on November 20th, there was a major milestone in the effort between the county and all 19 cities that are collaborating to create a true region-wide mental health response because we know mental health crises do not stop at city borders and we need to have a coordinated response throughout the county. On November 20th, there was a report out about the as-is state, if you will. So literally hundreds of people were, were interviewed, systems were reviewed, ride-alongs, or at least virtual ride-alongs occurred with the police department, with dispatch, with the fire department. And a lot of, of the folks who are involved in this project met with and spent time with those who have utilized the system, unfortunately, and who have mental health challenges or illness and what their experience is like. So what's occurred is, is how things work now has been clearly documented. And then also, the top priorities have been identified through all this very extensive stakeholder outreach. And while the initial goals, if you will, that we went into this program with were about having a 24/7 mobile response, non-law enforcement response to mental health, it's been expanded a bit because there are other areas that were noted to be important as well. So there are really four key initiatives or priorities that were identified by the key stakeholders. So one is that, the first is there would be a single phone number to call. That's not yet been identified what that number should be, but the thought is there would be an alternative to 911 that folks could call who need help in dealing with the mental health crisis or family or friends or member of the community could call. The second is to have a mobile 24/7 response. The third is to have a non-PD mobile response crisis team. And the fourth, which is, is quite expansive, is that there would be alternative destinations in which to take folks once there is a response. Right now, folks effectively go to the psychiatric evaluation center, which is in Martinez, where they are evaluated, can be held for up to 72 hours, and then they have to be transferred somewhere else. And as we all know, there's not enough capacity at, quotes, "somewhere else." The other option unfortunately is jail. And then the third option are emergency rooms at hospitals. And those latter two are certainly not where folks with mental illness should be going, but there are not many alternatives. So those are the four priorities that were identified through this, this outreach process. What I'm pleased to report is just earlier today was the first meeting of the design team. So the first phase that was recently concluded was documenting how things work currently. And the next phase is for the design team, which is comprised of several employees from the county. There are six representatives from six of the 19 cities. There are individuals from key mental health organizations, NAMI, various others, and then stakeholders in the community and again, users of, of the system, if you will, those who have mental illness are involved. And it's their, their priorities or their tasks, if you will, and objectives for this design team are to continue to work with the stakeholders to really pin down those priorities further, to break those down into more delineable action steps and to prioritize those. And the thought is, as opposed to bundling this all into one project and then veiling it at one time, there may be portions of this that can be done sooner than later, recognizing some are much more involved and challenging and comprehensive than others. recognizing some are much more involved and challenging and comprehensive than others. The team will be tasked with further defining the scope, schedule, and resources, and creating a detailed project plan for each of the four initiatives. And then also importantly, so we can measure how we're doing, is to identify the key data that's to be collected and to be measured, so that hopefully we can track outcomes down the road to find out how effective this program is, if it's meeting the intended objectives, and obviously to make changes as need be. So that's where we're at currently. There will be more updates as this team gets going. The first meeting was just today. And I also do want to, I do really and sincerely want to thank everybody at the county and others who have been involved in this program. The exact same folks who are working on this program are those who are responsible for the rollout of the largest vaccination effort in the history of humanity, and that's not lost on me or others. It's a tremendous undertaking, and yet they, in addition to trying to work through the vaccination program, this program remains a priority as well, and they are still dedicating the necessary time to move this forward, even amongst the pandemic. So that is very encouraging to see, and from my perspective, the the group is working well together. Not to say everybody agrees or everything is is easy, but the team is recognizing the differences that folks have in perspective, working through those to move forward to achieve the four four stated goals that I mentioned earlier. And that concludes my update this evening there.
Thank you, Dan. Good information there, and not just the twenty-four-seven mental health program, obviously, but all right, let's wear masks, get vaccinated, and get this pandemic behind us. Thanks for that update. All right, brings us to city council member reports on AB one, two, three, four activities, council member assignments, and various activities and upcoming events. So Mayor Pro Tem Francois, we're going to start with you on this one.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I have the privilege of serving on the Community Benefits Ad Hoc Committee with my colleague, Councilmember Silva. We met earlier this month, and we met today as well with our city attorney and staff, who've been very helpful in helping us craft and refine the Community Benefits Program in a way that I think is going to be very user-friendly and benefit both the city, property owners, and development communities, and I think will be a model for other cities to follow in implementation. So that should be coming forward to the council. I think we're about wrapping up our our final revisions to it, and it should be back before the council on February second. And then I also serve on the Legislative Committee with the mayor, and we met last week with staff and our city consultant to discuss the legislative agenda for this year. In short, we'll remain focused on financial stability, infrastructure upgrades, and environmental sustainability, while also seeking state assistance for a twenty-four-seven mental health crisis response team, seek COVID-19 economic relief efforts and programs, and also advocate for increased safety and detection monitoring of fuel and gas transmission pipelines. Of course, we're just a subcommittee, so we'll be reporting to the full council for approval of that legislative agenda. And then in light of some of the comments that were made earlier today, which I found defamatory of my colleagues and also of our police department, I wanted to share a comment that I heard from Dr. King's daughter yesterday, Reverend Bernice King. And she spoke yesterday and said that the King holiday has not only come at a time of great peril and physical violence, it has also come during a time of violence in our speech, what we say and how we say it. It is frankly out of control, and we are causing too much harm to one another. She urged all of us to pursue what her father called "the beloved community," a world in which conflict is solved non-violently and compassion dictates policy. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Matt. Next, let's move on to Councilmember Haskew.
Thank you. Well said, Matt. So I, it was kind of nice. January is when a lot of my committees didn't meet, so I had a sort of respite. But the Planning Commission at Contra Costa Transportation, the Planning Committee at Contra Costa Transportation Authority met, and it was a quick meeting, and I have a message to remind staff that our growth management plan, which was noted as under construction, is due by June thirtieth, and some of the other representatives got to boast about how their reports were in already. So just, I know we're we're short-staffed, but remember, please get them in by June. I also went to the Reverend Tax Committee for the California League of Cities, CalCities, I think is it's now called, and we set out our work plan for the year. We first approved a change in our policy statement that says that if there is a allotment of funding and the the basis is per capita, meaning by population, that it be allocated amongst the cities and entities by totally counting population rather than lumping things together in big chunks like they did for COVID. Cities over five hundred people, five hundred thousand people, get a different rate of reimbursement than cities less than. And so the group approved that change. We're also focusing on a lot of the same things that Mayor Pro Tem Francois mentioned. We want to secure state and federal funding for local COVID economic recovery. We want to secure funding for increased supply and affordability to either prevent people from becoming unhoused or to help people who are already unhoused. We want to improve state and local abilities to handle disaster preparedness, resilience, and recovery. And finally, to protect and modernize critical infrastructure items with particular focus to roads, bridges, and broadband. And then it's it for me, and I'm going to take a glass of water because I'm chunky.
Thanks, Luella. Councilmember Darling.
Okay, I actually have something to report. I actually got to do something. We have the Housing and Community Development meeting this morning where we looked at a grant application the city is considering jointly with a local affordable housing developer, and it will have both transit and housing components to it. Some of the transit components, the city will be responsible for, some part will be responsible for. So we're moving that one forward, and we'll be looking at that in the near future. I'm also finally going to get trained on how to be a good council member and going to the League of California's new member orientation. Unfortunately, it's going to be on Zoom, and I'm tired of the boxes, but I'm looking forward to working with many of my new federally elected this Thursday and Friday, and then the following Thursday and Friday, to learn how to do this job. So that's my report.
Thank you, Cindy. And Councilmember Silva.
Thank you very much, and Happy New Year, everyone. The last week, the Housing Policy Committee of the CalCities League met. I'm a part of that policy committee. We ran out of time, and we have to meet again. There are a number of housing bills that we're concerned about as we go forward this year. One of the issues we talked at length last week is SB six, Caballero. It basically would give owners of property and developers by right the ability to convert commercially zoned or office retail service commercial to residential without us being able to weigh in. So this basically way taking away our authority on the general plans. The only zoning that we would, they would not be able to do that with would be industrial zoning. So I guess it's time for us to convert everything back to industrial zoning, even though we don't have one in the city. We have compiled a list of amendments and concerns that we wanted to talk to the author about. And there are other bills as well. Tony Atkins has put another bill in that she did last year, which is duplex zoning across the state. And one that we were talking about is related to fires and wildfire hazardous zones, and would those be allowed for housing? So that's just a few of the twenty that have already been submitted, and there's more to follow on that. The other thing I will mention also in relation to housing, the Association of Bay Area Governments is meeting this week to finalize their proposal for Plan Bay Area 2050, but also the Regional Housing Needs Allocation Methodology that will be used to allocate numbers across the nine Bay Area counties and the hundred and one or hundred and two cities. The allocation will be finalized sometime by next fall, but this this step coming this Thursday night is pretty critical. Contra Costa is taking a big hit under some premise that we have not been doing our fair share across the county. And so there is a very large number that is being proposed to be allocated to Walnut Creek. Keeping an eye on that. It is pretty much ninety-nine percent baked, but we're going to see what we can do on it. That would be my report for this evening, although I would like to ask the city manager for clarification on when is, who are the six representatives of the cities that are now on the Design Task Force for the Crisis Response Initiative, and when will the mayor's conference be hearing back on a status report? Thank you.
I can address that now or later. So the six cities that have representatives are Walnut Creek, Lafayette, Concord, San Ramon, San Pablo, and Pittsburgh. So we have east, west, central county and the Tri Valley area represented. I don't know the names of the six individuals. It varies. There are a few. There's a member from a policy analyst from a city manager's office. For us, we have Marty Beggs-Cassin, our police manager, who oversees police services, a non-sworn member of our police department. And a couple of the other cities have members of the police department, so that their perspectives are captured in this, along with those from the community, from the county, and other other disciplines, if you will. And then as far as the mayor's conference, the next mayor's conference is February, Thursday, February fourth. And that's when we intend to provide the next update in that venue.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you, Cindy. Well, so I am a member of the California League of Cities Environmental Quality Policy Committee, and we discussed our priorities that we're working on for this year, which includes solid waste and recycling, climate change mitigation, and energy and utilities, and if you think PG&E issues on that, and emergency and disaster preparedness. And so we'll be having several more meetings coming up over the course of this year. I'm also on the rebound committee, along with Councilmember Silva. And the grant program is what we discussed at our last meeting, and of course, that's actually our next item on the agenda. So we'll be talking about that. I'm also on the Committee for Walnut Creek Downtown, and we met, and the board was certainly happy to hear about the grant program. And we discussed ways to get the word out to all the eligible restaurants in Walnut Creek, and so there'll be more to follow on that one. With County Connection, I'm on the board for that. There's concerns about state funding for public transit and how this could impact local routes, especially if we think of our local shuttle in town, the free shuttle. So we're talking with legislative committees about that. And we met with Rebecca Bauer-Kahan, Assembly Member for the area, regarding issues that are important to Walnut Creek and the region when it comes to public transit. I also wanted to mention that it's been about two years since we've had the last staff update on cannabis regulations, and we promised the public to review our policy by now. Since then, we've had two delivery services open within Walnut Creek, along with multiple county cities opening retail dispensaries on their own. So I'd like to ask staff to provide us with a report on how this is working for these other cities, especially with regards to security, locations, and tax revenues, and for this to be provided on an upcoming agenda in the near future. So
Part of order. It sounds like it would be good to have an update at some point, but I do believe you need council consensus on that.
Okay, well, let's ask them right now. Is, I'll I'll make the motion that we direct staff to bring back a report in for cannabis regulations, and what's the update, and what we could look at possibly reviewing for Walnut Creek. Is there a second?
I'll second that. I'm interested in finding where we are, what's working and not working. I hear you hear so much. I want to know sort through some of that.
Great. Susie, could you take a vote call on that?
I think we need to have a discussion.
Okay.
At least how much discussion can we have?
Right, the council should only discuss whether you want it on the agenda, not the substance of the issues.
No, no, I understand. Okay.
Okay. I will, I will say that I think we need to discuss this at our retreat and not pile on an item when we are in the middle of a pandemic and a health crisis, an economic crisis, and we have four priorities plus the mental health response that we're trying to work on, et cetera. So I will be I will not, I don't want to discuss this until March, when we, when it's an opportunity to discuss what we need to focus on.
Anybody else wish to comment on this? Yes.
I also, oh, Matt, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. I also agree with Councilmember Silva. It is, the staff has so much to do. They are trying to work under very difficult circumstances. We are, we have a program that we have in plan where the council can give guidance to the staff about what we think is important in a more studied manner than just popping them up at random meetings. So I I agree with Councilmember Silva that we should consider talking about it as one of our priorities in in March.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll just say that I'm supportive of an update. I think it's just a timing question. They're primarily for the reason that there are two of us, Councilmember Darling and myself, who didn't partake in the debate last time, and I think we, the the city needs an update on this issue, and that our voices should be heard on that. But I, it does make sense to me that we wait until March to have a conversation in terms of the timing, and I also know that we just approved, I believe, the first delivery operator is up and operational, and I know staff thought that there would be some benefit to have some operational empirical data from that operator that we could discuss at said meeting. So I'm thinking that that might be four to six months in the future.
So are you saying then that you're you're open to hearing the report, but we don't want to even discuss when we would receive the report until March?
Well, I, what, since we're in this limited environment of just talking about whether or not to get the update, I think that there is benefit to having a fuller discussion on this issue at the retreat, where we could say everything that we want to be included in that update. But I think it's a little, it might be a little premature now to try and schedule something or even say when it would be. I'm supportive of an update, but I think we need to flesh out some more details at the retreat.
So let me ask Steve or Dan, if we were to approve to receive a report, we don't have to identify now when that would be, would do we?
That's correct. You don't have to identify it.
It would just say, we would like to receive a report, and then we can work on over the course of the next couple of months, when that report would be provided to council. Is that correct?
That's correct. We have retreats. We used to do this, and we were in a mess. And it was before you were on council, Kevin, but we had to constantly add things like this and try to do that. And what staff's first reaction should be is, what are you willing to take off their workload in order to start thinking about a new topic? This is the beginning of the year. I would like to hear that people have, that staff is able to come back to work and work in the office because the pandemic has been, you know, made progress, and that we're focused on the things. So that's what the retreat's for.
Well, we certainly, we certainly all want the staff to be able to come back, and I have no problem discussing this over the retreat, but we but but I I do want to keep my motion, which has been seconded now, we can vote on this, of a staff coming back at a time to be discussed, to provide a report, and we can do all the background work, we can, and we can figure that out, and they can do their their assessments and and come back to us, and we don't have to identify the time right now, but just to put it out there that to receive the report. And so that is And so that is the motion which has been seconded. And Susie, if you can take a vote on that.
Mayor Welk.
Hi.
Council member Darling.
Hi.
Council member Haskew.
No.
Council member Silva.
No, not until we talk about it or.
Mayor Mayor Pro Tem Francois.
I would the understanding that we'll talk about it at the retreat and that we won't set a date until we've had an opportunity to do that.
Motion carries three to two.
Thank you. And this to be to be discussed at the retreat. And I will go from there, but it's on the table. Lastly, since this was brought up a couple of times, and I feel this is compelled me to address this as well is regarding the protest activity on January 9th. So we on the city council, as you've heard, have heard from many residents, not just here tonight, but in general, through emails, through phone calls and through conversation in the street, expressing concern about the recent protest activity in Walnut Creek. The most recent, of course, being on, well, Saturday, January 9th, was the one that involved about 50 to 60 mostly young people advocating the message that black lives matter. By the way, a statement that I fully support and have participated in rallies for many times over the last year, regardless of what one of the speakers had said. Some of the protesters have questioned why there was a large police presence. And some community members have questioned why protesters were allowed to march on city streets. Some of us simply, why Walnut Creek? To those who questioned the police presence and preparation, including putting barricades up around City Hall, I only need to remind you of the protest just a few days prior in Washington DC. Those of you protesting may come to a demonstration with only peaceful intent. Our police department has no way of knowing that, nor can they know who will actually show up when we get word of planned protests. In fact, just this past weekend in Vacaville, unexpected and in fact anticipated peaceful protest suddenly turned violent with vandalism and injuries. In years past, including the huge women's marches, organizers have coordinated with us so that we can facilitate their peaceful protest. That hasn't happened in the social justice protests of late. With images of people storming the Capitol fresh in our minds, the city has to prepare on the side of expecting the unexpected. To those who questioned why the police allow demonstrators to take up to the streets, the reality is quite simple. We would, of course, prefer marchers stay on sidewalks and not put themselves and others in harm's way, just as they did actually in a smaller protest this last weekend where they stayed on the sidewalks in celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. But when they do, we work to manage it as best we can. Citing everyone for jaywalking or other traffic infractions is not the answer. We have a responsibility to keep people safe, the people protesting, the people in our community and our city law enforcement staff. It's a balancing act that we always strive to achieve better. Our police department's response to these events has evolved, and I believe it's improved. We want the community to know that if you're in your car or on the sidewalk or one day dining outdoors again, we will be as present as possible to keep you safe. To those who question why Walnut Creek, I'm proud of our community's collective desire to exercise the right to protest. While the protest activity this past year has involved some people from within our community, much of it is also involved people from outside our community and some without Walnut Creek's best interests at heart. We will continue to facilitate peaceful protest and adjust our response as conditions warrant. And on that note, I'd like to mention the police did protect the public and city from violence or injuries on January 9th. They did their job in the face of, and I saw this disgusting verbal abuse hurled at them from a foot away as they tried to leave in their own cars. The video of that was posted and I was appalled at the protester's confrontation, trying to elicit a response for video postings on social media in what was otherwise a peaceful event. The officers stood professionally and resolutely without responding. They are to be commended. To clarify, we do not know of local plans for protest activity relating to the inauguration, but our public safety team will be ready to keep everyone safe if conditions change as we accept expect them to always be ready to protect the public safety. And that ends my comments. Now it's it's about 8:15. Why don't we take a 10 minute break? And then we'll reconvene here at 8:25 for the final agenda item. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have on our agenda the restaurant grant program fund allocation. And Terry, I believe we have a staff report. Are you the one giving it?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to kick it off. And then Colette Hannah, our Economic Development Manager, I believe, is trying to join the discussion and she'll present the program details.
Okay, great.
So while we're waiting for her to join us, I can go ahead and begin if you'd like.
Sure, please do.
Thank you. So taking us all back in time, only a month. And we at this time in December, we had just recently moved into what staff calls deep purple, where the stay at home orders went into effect, rescinding a lot of the opening that we had been able to do with outdoor dining and our retailers. In response to that and understanding the large impact that that is having and would have on our businesses, the council discussed creating a grant program targeted to restaurants with the recognition that restaurants generate a significant percentage of our city sales tax and that this constant yo-yoing back and forth between open and full closures has serious impacts on our restaurants because they carry perishable inventory and high levels of staffing per square footage of leased space. So in December, the council set criteria and then referred the program to an ad hoc to come up with the details and mechanics of how this program would work. And as the mayor mentioned in his comments, the ad hoc has met several times to refine the program with the overriding goal and focus of getting dollars out as quickly as possible into our businesses' hands. We understand this isn't a silver bullet by itself. It's not going to save anyone restaurants, but given our good fortune with some year end savings, it seemed the responsible thing to do what we could to help our businesses. One of the major changes you probably noted in the staff report is staff recommended and the ad hoc supported the idea of moving the proposed allocation from $500,000 to a million. And that was done entirely with the goal of getting more help to more businesses. So Colette will talk you through a little bit more about how many businesses we think will be able to help with that. But we think it's an important move forward to support our businesses in a truly meaningful way. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Colette Hannah, our Economic Development Manager, to walk you through the program. Colette?
All righty. Thanks, Terry. Good evening, everyone, mayor and members of the council. Colette Hannah, Economic Development Manager. And we do have a presentation. You may believe you're gonna perfect. Awesome. All righty. Thank you. So as Terry mentioned, yes, I will walk us through the program and what was established with staff and the ad hoc committee members. So we go to the next slide. So in terms of the industry overall, we had discussed that this would be available for restaurants. And we do have approximately 200 restaurants and bars throughout the city. We are looking at doing this as a citywide program. Sorry, just have a thing here. Um. So sales tax generation, we saw a loss in sales tax last year. I'm taking us all the way back to 2013 levels. 2019 was actually our best year in terms of of sales tax generated from the restaurant industry. But obviously, we took a major hit last year, again, taking us back to 2013 levels. In terms of jobs impact, and this number is a regional number, regions saw a loss in restaurant and accommodation jobs. That's how it's reported on in the MSA through the Employment Development Department, but saw a loss of over 26,000 jobs. But saw a loss of over 26,000 jobs in this particular industry. And one of the things that we're also looking to do as a part of this program is being able to gather data. We unfortunately don't have Walnut Creek data for our jobs numbers. And so those that apply for this program gives us an opportunity to also glean a little bit more information to be able to have this kind of data specifically for Walnut Creek. And next slide. So in terms of the scope of the program, we're, as I mentioned, launching the citywide, available to restaurants and bars throughout. As Terry mentioned, the original appropriation from the council discussion on December 15th was for $500,000. But after further discussion with the ad hoc committee and staff, we discussed raising that appropriation to $1 million to, again, be able to make funds available to more businesses. We determined two categories. One category of bars and fast casual or limited service restaurant operations, food service operations, receiving a grant allocation of $5,000. And then the other category of full-service or dine-in restaurants receiving a grant amount of $10,000, again, for those that qualify. And the rationale behind this is typically a full-service or a dine-in restaurant obviously would have greater investment in equipment, more employees, greater inventory, and would have a need for a larger dollar amount. So we established these two categories to be able to meet the needs of both, but taken into account with the... What the need might be based on their service operations or type of operation. And next slide. So in terms of our communications and outreach, we created a flyer that you see there on your left. And we sent that out, working with our business license team, both by mail and sent out several emails as well. And this was primarily just to give the restaurants a heads-up that this is coming with a few program details. Plan is to launch on January 21st, so this Thursday. But also directing them to a website to be able to sign up and get more information. So this was a way to be able to, again, start collecting that data, but also get the word out that this program is coming. We also posted on our social media channels where we reached around 7,000 followers with just this singular post. And then that website that I mentioned for an inquiry will become the grant application site. So the grant itself, they can apply online. And so that is in a staging area right now. And right now, those that are interested can go and basically sign up to receive information. So we'll continue to push this out to make sure that restaurants know that the program is available. It is a first-come, first-served program, so we definitely want to make sure that the restaurants are aware, working with our partners as well. Walnut Creek downtown and the Chamber to be able to get this information out to their memberships as well. And next slide. So with the proposed uses, we wanted to keep this pretty broad, not kind of pigeonhole a business in terms of what they're able to use. But we do know that there are some common categories that are COVID-related, where businesses would need assistance. And we also looked at what other cities identified as proposed uses. So obviously, COVID-related expenses, rent payroll, the PPE that restaurants are having to invest in. We are launching a new program or a new element of rebound with the outdoor dining winterization structure. So these are more substantial structures to withstand winter conditions. So grant funds might be able to use for something like that. We also, as a part of rebound, launched another element for interior improvements. Things like partitions and things that restaurants or businesses might be able to do to accommodate social distancing. So that's something that might be able to be used. And then another element of rebound is a takeout window. So those kind of more construction-heavy or construction-related items, we envision restaurants being able to use the funds for that as well. And next slide. So as far as the criteria, the restaurant needs to have a physical brick-and-mortar location in Incorporated Walnut Creek, needs to be in business in the city since June 2019. What we're trying to do here is a couple of things. One is definitely acknowledge the businesses that have a little bit of a history as well as new businesses, but also establish a time period in which they would have been in business for a long enough period of time for us to make some comparison, looking at their financials from 2019 time period and 2020 time period. In good standing with the city with an active business license, no outstanding city debt or liens, independently owned, and submission of those financial documents so that we can do that analysis to gauge what kind of impact COVID has had on their operations. And next slide. So financial documents that we will be collecting, again, to be able to gauge the impact. We know that there is a loss that most businesses have suffered, lost during this time and definitely struggling. And that's the reason why we're doing this program. But we are looking for that documentation through their financials in order to be able to gauge that and specifically looking for that 25% loss in order to be able to have these grant funds and, again, hopefully be able to make an impact. And next slide. So as I mentioned earlier, the ad hoc and staff met and are suggesting this higher appropriation amount and the ability to help more businesses with some of their higher costs improvements and changes to operations associated with COVID. And while this obviously doesn't solve all the funding challenges for the restaurants, but our hope is that this combined with some of the other grants, the state just released a grant program, might be able to help in providing some aid. And next slide. So recommended action is to adopt the resolution improving the Restaurant Grant Program to assist restaurants in Walnut Creek, authorizing the city manager to implement the program and appropriating $1 million from fiscal year 2020 year-end on assigned general fund monies to fund the program. And that completes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Colette. And this is... Great to see. All right. So I'm sure council members have some questions. Who would like to go first? Cindy, who is also on the rebound committee with me.
Thank you very much. And thank you to staff for pulling this together and working with the ad hoc committee on this virtually over the holidays. I know Kevin and I were working offline on getting some research done. And I know you all were too. And when we came together, you had great ideas and truly appreciate the amount of time that you invested in this. A couple of questions, since we haven't been able to actually see what the application looks like. But some of the requirements that were listed in the resolution, the number of employees that we're asking about, is that... How are we making sure we're getting a level playing field? Is that full-time equivalent employees that you're asking for? And my second half of that is, I think we need to specify that it's walnut... Employees in Walnut Creek in case they own a restaurant in Concord. We don't want them mixing apples and oranges if you're looking for good local data. And you're nodding.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's a good point. And we are looking at full-time and part-time. It's not a criteria for submissions. It's more so just information that we're collecting.
But you're collecting it as part of the application process. So I just wanted to be... Okay. The other thing is, I think we're asking for the square footage of the business. Is that both indoor as well as privately-owned outdoor space? Or how are you discriminating against that? Because some of these establishments have outdoor patios that they might not consider in their indoor space. So just heads-up.
Yeah, yeah. No, good point. We're looking for whatever they're using as part of their operation.
Okay. And then we're also making sure it's clear that if they have other establishments around the region, that we're asking for the square footage of the business in Walnut Creek. Okay.
Yes.
The other question... Four more questions. Business in good standing, and it dawns on me, since a few of our restaurants in other areas stayed open when they weren't supposed to. And finally, the health department had to move in. Don't we also want to be sure they're in good standing with the health department?
Well, what we have done is we have our code enforcement team that's going out and kind of checking on any restaurants that are in violation. And what we had determined is that if they are addressing the issues, if there are any, paying fines, that's what we've established is in good standing.
Okay. So we're not... We... Okay. And the last two questions, what do we anticipate? Have we found the administrator that's going to support the rapid turnaround of these applications?
Yes, we believe that we have, and we are finalizing the contract with that.
Great. And then what do we anticipate? Let's say this goes live in two days and somebody applies Monday morning. Or you get the first one on Friday. Is this, as they come in, we're going to process them and just move money out? So we're not waiting until we get batches of them?
Right, right. Yes, we'll process them as they come in.
Okay. And is there... This may be a question for the city attorney. If subject to audit, it means not everyone gets audited, but you're subject to it. You have to sign some agreement that says you recognize that you might have to be audited. If we find that they don't meet their criteria that made them... If they were not really eligible and we gave them money, is there a clawback provision that we can ask for the grant funds back?
Yes, there will be a clawback provision in the agreement.
I hope I used the right, really technical term there. I know that's one of the state uses. All right. And those were... Again, thank you so much for turning this around so quickly. And I know the business community is truly going to appreciate this, as well the community at large.
Councilmember Darling?
I just have a really quick question. It has to do with the timeframe the restaurant is open. It looks like in the application, you're looking for profit and loss statements from October to December of 2019, and then the same period for 2020. And yet, we're looking for restaurants that have been open since June of 2019. How come... Why was June picked? If we have enough financial information for the... Looking at the October to December timeframe, why was June picked instead of October?
Councilmember Darling, we picked that date because it linked to our business license process. So we were... That's one of our data sources that we're confirming against. But when we got to the financial data, we were most interested in comparing apples to apples. And we felt like the last quarter of 2020 compared to the last quarter of 2019 would give us our best comparison.
I'm just thinking, do we have an idea, in looking at our business licenses, how many restaurants that are operating now will not be eligible because they weren't in... They didn't have business license or at the end of 2019 fiscal year 2019? Do we know what that number is?
We do not. That's part of the data analysis that we'll be doing here. And, you know, we're assuming that there's about 220 restaurants or food service businesses in business license database. We're assuming probably at least 20 of them have closed or reincorporated under a different name. We assume that, you know, a good chunk of those... Well, not a good chunk. We know that some of them have actually had better years than they did even in 19. If they're quick serve especially, some of those businesses are doing better. And then also in that 220 is a few folks who are primarily catering. And we've broken this down to where it focuses on those businesses that have retail storefronts. Doesn't have to be a huge storefront, but it has to be an on-service, pick-up-your-food restaurant format. So we're guestimating right now, very roughly, that we'll see about 150 businesses who are really eligible for these monies. But that's based on our best guess.
Okay. And then bars are eligible.
Bars are eligible for the lesser amount. We only have six in the city that are true bars. Most of the places we all think of as a bar are actually restaurants that transition into being bars later in the evening.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Brotem Francois.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to Colette and Terry for the great staff report and the tremendous amount of work that went into this in a matter of four weeks, I think. So... Colette, one of your slides showed the reduction in sales tax dollars attributable to restaurants. And do you have a comparable figure for reduction in sales tax to retailers?
I don't... We do have that number. I can get that number for you. It's not a direct correlation between the two because you have, you know, obviously, large, big-box anchor stores in retail. That is obviously a different business model than a restaurant. But we do have those numbers of what the impact was with retail specifically.
I actually...
Oh, do you have it? Great.
Yeah, I actually have the latest sales tax data in front of me for overall general retail. And that's all categories. That's department stores, furniture, drugstores, everybody who sells something that isn't food or cars, basically. You know, for the end of 2020, that was about 5.2 million in sales tax versus the same time the prior year, we were at 7.1 million for that category. So I'd have to do some quick math, but it's a significant drop of almost $2 million.
I guess in light of that, then, I'd ask staff and/or the members of the subcommittee the same question that I asked in December. And I think maybe even more pressing now, given that the recommendation was to double the amount of funds that will be available for this program. What would be the... Was there any thought given or consideration to opening it up to independent, small retail businesses, non-restaurants? And if not, why not?
Well, if I remember correctly, that was part of the discussion we had here at council back in December. Is that, you know, we are aware that this pandemic has been hitting all of our business categories, not just restaurants. But the restaurant was feeling... The general feeling was that restaurant was being impacted in a really tangible way and that they weren't able to sell as effectively as retailers who were already on web channels, who could do curbside pickup. We just know the conversion rate between retailers and restaurants in terms of who's able to really get product out the door through multiple channels is not quite the same. The retailers can... With general products can ship. You know, they're seeing a higher usage of curbside pickup. So if you look at Broadway Plaza, their general retail pickup is really humming. So that was part of the discussion, but really, it was a choice that we had to make to say, do we spread this money out over multiple categories and get folks a little bit of money? Or do we target it to those industries? And we know our downtown is heavily dependent on restaurants for its vitality. And, you know, I think the decision here was to focus on restaurants.
Let me just add to that if I could briefly. I do just want to clarify process. So as Terry noted, the council discussed the scope of a program back on December 15th. And the direction was to pursue this for restaurants and bars. And there were five criteria that were provided at that point in time for staff and the ad hoc committee to work through. So staff and the ad hoc did not revisit beyond those parameters because that was not within the purview that was provided by council. Obviously, tonight or subsequent to this meeting, council could change the program and broaden it. But we did not vet any of those other opportunities for other businesses because that was not the direction from the council on December 15th.
Okay. I just have one other question for, I think it's for the city attorney. Some of the application process requires the submission of financial documents. So what assurances could we provide to restaurants that that information is not going to be made public?
There are exceptions under the Brown Act, I'm sorry, the Public Records Act, that provide that financial information provided as part of an application process are exempt from public disclosure. And so to the extent that that state law remains as it is now, we would rely on that for purposes of their profit and loss statement and tax return information, business tax return information.
So all of that would remain confidential? A member of the public couldn't come in and ask for it and see what restaurant, what sort of business losses they had?
That's correct, provided that state law doesn't change, which we don't anticipate. These particular exemptions have been present in the Public Records Act for a number of years.
Thank you.
And yes, Luella?
Thank you. I have one question about the sales...
I have one question about the sales tax report for the retail. Does that include the Wayfair allocations from the county? Or is it just locally generated?
The numbers I shared are just the locally generated. So there would be additional monies baked into the county pool numbers that, that's not what I shared with you. I shared just the direct local Walnut Creek sales.
Thank you. And my other question is, I know we agree that we had to have some kind of time record for the restaurants that we're helping. But we got a pretty compelling letter from one restaurateur who was essentially building his restaurant during the 2019 period of time. And, and I can think of one other restaurant on Locust that I know didn't open until June, and both of them are good additions to our community. And I, I just, I just, I am, I am now thinking that we really needed to be a little broader in how we evaluated those restaurants. The two restaurants that I can think of, and I'm sure there are more, because there are lots of restaurants in the other part of town. The Twisted Timer, Times, Twisted Times and the Brioche de Paris. Both of those are relatively new and I think only opened in 2000, and that got slammed. They didn't even have a chance to build up their clientele per se before they were thrown into this thing. And they were more disadvantaged, disadvantaged than some other restaurants that had been in business for many years. So I don't know if the council is opening to revisiting or, you know, particularly the rebound. I agree with you. I was a proponent when I was on the committee about we had to have substantial, not difficult to produce financial data, but I'm thinking we were a little hasty in our decision.
So I, can I, may I respond? Because I, I, as part of the ad hoc committee, we talked to four communities that have run grant programs. And the two that I talked to specifically said they really isolated because some of these grants for these other communities started in late spring. And they did not include businesses that tried to start up or were caught in that early stage because they couldn't tell the difference between normal startup operating challenges and the results of the pandemic. And so that's, you know, we kind of, and Kevin may have heard the same thing when he talked to the two communities.
I, I did, the two cities I spoke to said as well, in fact, in some cases, a year, they had to be open a year. And in one case, I think it was they had to have been open for two years. So we didn't have that, but they, they needed to show that they were already a viable member of the restaurant community.
Well, I've been to both of them before, and I'm sure that's true. And they were, and they were chugging along even in the beginning of the year before the pandemic happened. And, and then just the rug got pulled out from underneath their feet. So I, I don't know, yeah, I agree with you. It makes sense to follow the other guys who are done, already done this, but I don't feel good about it completely.
I don't think any of us feel very good completely about everything.
Any of it, no. If we wanted to add that, we would basically have to put them in a separate category because you cannot, I would not be comfortable changing the guidelines we've established for the 200. For the five. They would have to be evaluated separately. That'd be the way to do it with, with very.
Or you order, or you give them a different number, like 250, 2,500 or something. I, I don't, I, just to completely ignore people who made an investment in our community, probably investing great sums of their potentially necessary retirement money to do this. And then just getting smacked in the head, this doesn't seem, this doesn't seem fair.
Understood. We can, let's revisit that in a minute. I have a couple of questions, Colette. So first of all, do we know or have you established what the parameters difference would be between, say, somebody that would get the $5,000 grant versus somebody that gets the $10,000 grant? Would it be square footage? Would it be number of employees or financial statement? Are you just kind of, have you thought about how we would delineate the difference?
Now, we're using the NEX codes, North American Industry Classification System. And they have specific, actually, if we could bring back up the presentation, we don't have to. But it's, it's basically the NEX code that would specify if it's a full-service restaurant or a limited-service restaurant or bar.
Okay, great, thank you. And you, you'd mentioned that there were only six bars in Walnut Creek. Does that include some of the pure beer and wine places? I know there's a couple of those as well. Or are you talking about six ones that have full alcohol licenses?
Yeah, we're referring to those that are a typed 48 license, where it's, it's just alcohol, no food service.
Okay, so there are a couple of extra ones that would just be beer and wine on top of those six that could apply.
When you say just beer and wine?
Like, there, there are some microbreweries that only have the storefront. They don't sell any food, it's just beer. I, I think they have wine, but I know it's a lot of beer.
Yeah, they could qualify, they could apply as well.
Okay, thank you. Those are the questions that I have. Does any council member have any other questions right now? Okay, so then let's open it up to the public if the public would like to speak on this particular item. And if they would like to, please use the raise hand feature or press star nine. If you would like to provide a public comment for the restaurant grant program specifically, nothing else. For those who desire to provide public comment on this item, please raise your hand now. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off approximately automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been and will during this, during this item be posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. Also, please note that during public hearings and consideration items, group spokesperson are allotted 10 minutes in lieu of other members of the group speaking on the item. We trust that everyone will follow the rules. And at this time, I will ask the city clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any hands raised for public comment. Oh, I do. We'll go ahead and bring in Danny Zuko.
Yeah, I think this grant program is really good for the city. But I don't think, I think the money from the city for this grant program, you can also get more money instead of going out to all the police agencies, five different cities, and paying them overtime pay. Grab that overtime pay and give it to the businesses. Why can't you do that? You guys have five different cities to come in with SWAT teams.
Okay, Dan, you've spoken this issue before, if you'd like.
So go and give the money to, go and give the money to the people that really need it. And don't spend $75,000 on overtime pay. Go give it to the businesses, Kevin.
Thank you, Dan. All right, I don't see any more public comments on this. So we're going to bring it back to council. Would anybody from the city council like to make additional comments? And I know Luella, we can bring that up for a motion if you would like on, on your particular suggestion, but let's bring it back to council for any comments at this point.
Yeah. No, no point, no point for a motion if it's not going to get any support. So some comments would be appreciated.
Sure. Cindy, Cindy Silva, why don't we start with you as you are a member of the rebound committee with me?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you to staff for all of the work you did so quickly on it. I'm not sure a month ago that you thought you could pull this off and you did it. Thank you. And I truly believe that doing this in the restaurant sector is probably one of the most important things we could do because of the impact on our sales tax revenues. It is a big sector. What Terry outlined were how the difference between the 2020 and 2019 sales tax revenues for general retail. But the difference is down, we're down to 2013 statistics in terms of the numbers for sales tax for restaurants. I mean, they have been hit more significantly. And I also think that they represent more jobs and the other economic activity that occurs around it for those small businesses. So it is, and they have significant costs for PPE, their labor costs, perishables, equipment, et cetera, to be able to serve their customer base. So I really believe that this is important for the restaurants for that reason. I would be interested if we had some inkling of how many new restaurants there have been in Walnut Creek since June of 2019 that are ineligible, but perhaps we can keep an eye on it and staff can bring us back some information subsequently as opposed to doing this in the wind and trying to figure out if it's two or 22. So, because on a first-come, first-served basis, the so I could be convinced to set aside $25,000 of the million to be allocated toward those in that category while we go figure out how many are in the category if that might be an amenable approach to how to handle it. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Any other council member comments? Councilmember Darling.
This is one I've been struggling with because I know, you know, we are in a pandemic, 100-year event, and we do not have enough money in the city to solve all the problems. And I know personal care, fitness, restaurants that have, that tried to open in 2019, there's a number of groups that are not going to be included in this program. And that's, breaks my heart because these are our neighbors, these are our friends. But we also have to be true to the, the quest we sent staff off on and gave them direction. And so has, I would like to see this program move forward. And then as we start to see sales tax numbers and start to get a better idea of whether or not our budget, what our budget is doing, is at that point, start to look at, are there other things we can do to help other segments of our, our economy in the city? So I, you know, I think the staff has put a tremendous amount of effort in this. I'm really impressed with the ad hoc members and the staff's work. As heartbreaking as it is, I am reluctant to start going back and adding in additional categories now or restaurants that opened more recently, even though that breaks my heart. So that's kind of the direction I'm going right now.
Thank you, Cindy. Anybody else for any comments? Matt?
Thank you. Again, thank you to staff and members of the, of the rebound committee for the hard work on this. I, I view this program as a reinvestment in our community. My family and I have been dutifully supporting our restaurants, ordering out, takeout. I'm sure all my colleagues have, every week at least. And one minor concern I have is with outreach. I certainly have seen the, all the program, all the notices on the Facebook page, but I worry about smaller businesses. And I don't know if there can be a leafleting of, of the downtown restaurants or something like that. That can happen quickly. I'm certainly planning on calling all our locals and letting them know about it so that they can jump on it pretty quickly. But I do think it is, it is the right and proper thing to do at this point. And I'm also, being a member of the legislative committee, aware of the efforts the state is making, including devoting a large chunk of that $15 billion surplus from last year's funds and devoting at least a billion of it, I believe, for small business and their small business grant program. The tier one of that program, just the, the expiration period just happened, I think, this week. But they're, they're anticipating having three more phases of it. And whatever we can do to get the word out to our business communities and our, our local retailers of that opportunity. And I would include newer restaurants in that category as well. I think it is heartbreaking for people. I, I applaud them for, I always applaud small businesses and for opening up in our community and showing their commitment and devotion to us and especially restaurants in this pandemic. It's, it's, it's certainly welcome and we want to help them in any way we can. But I think we do owe a duty to the restaurants that have been in town for, for a little period of time. And to see what we can with limited funds to, to help them first.
Thank you, Matt. And Luella, any further comments?
At least I got them some advertising.
Yes, you did. And, and it breaks my heart as well. We've got hundreds of businesses locally. We want to be able to help them all. We only have a finite amount of money, and so we have to make difficult decisions. And if we had an infinite amount, then there's wouldn't even be a discussion. So understanding that we can't help all businesses, I do recognize, and I think, I think we all do here, actually, that restaurants have significant upfront expenses they've already incurred, not to mention the cost for winterizing before the state actually shut down all the outdoor dining use as well. And there will be further costs ahead too. And, and, and we have to also recognize, of course, the restaurants are a draw for the city. It helps not just our tax base, but it helps employees. Most restaurants have a significant number of employees. Even smaller restaurants have a, have a good handful of employees. That's not always the case with all the other businesses. And it helps, so it helps them keep their jobs. And, and if this can help restaurants get through some of these challenging times, that also helps them ramp back up. Because unlike a lot of smaller businesses where they can just, if, if the state were to say, or the county were to say, you could open tomorrow, they can put out their open sign, they're ready for business. Restaurants can't do that. They have to order the food, they have to get their pay, their, their staff back. They've got to prepare and get, and get everything ready for that. It's going to take them several days to a couple of weeks to actually ramp back up. So this can help them to survive. I think it was Cindy who said during our last rebound committee meeting, this is a life preserver. This is not a lifeboat that's going to help get you to the shore. It's a life preserver to keep you going until things open up again, which we hope will be, as we heard, just heard from Terry, within a month and hopefully less. But, you know, just to get that extra part, if we can help get you there. So again, I wish we could help all businesses, but for now, let's hope that this bridge that can be built allows restaurants to remain viable until they can be open for dining again. And, and with that, I'll entertain a motion.
So I'll move to adopt the resolution approving the restaurant grant program to assist restaurants in Walnut Creek, authorizing the city manager to implement the program and appropriating $1 million from fiscal year 2020 year-end unassigned general fund monies, i.e. one-time money to fund the program.
Luella, would you like to make the second?
I would love to make the second because I really supported the, the program when I was on the rebound committee, as well as the fact that I forgot to thank the staff because they turned themselves inside out to accomplish a pretty impressive program with, with pretty pictures and, and sales pitches. And you just did it, bang-up job. And I'm sorry, I didn't say that in the first round. So yes, with that second.
And they sure did. I appreciate that. And Luella, just a special appreciation for you for helping kick this off earlier last month to help even get this to the point that we're on the agenda. So thank you for your work on that. And Susie, why don't we take a vote?
Councilmember Silva.
Councilmember Haskio.
Hi.
Councilmember Darling.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Francois.
Enthusiastic, aye.
And Mayor Wilk.
Very enthusiastically, aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I have one last comment, answer to a question. And I appreciated the mayor Protem's question about communication. That was probably the bulk of our second and third meetings on the ad hoc was really talking about how we're going to get the message out. And it was, if I, she's nodding, I believe it was mailed to every business license operator in town in those right categories. So we wanted to make sure, short of leafleting the telephone poles. But now that you've mentioned it, like, give us all 50 and we'll just go door to door.
Thank you for, thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Silva.
Right, so, all right, restaurants, let's get those applications in. I believe the application we heard will be open on Thursday. Right. So, all right, restaurants, let's get those applications in. I believe the application we heard will be open on Thursday. First come, first served. And everybody help get the word out to your favorite restaurants that are in town that would qualify. All right. So with that, we are at the end of our regularly scheduled meeting agenda. And so we're going to continue the public communication that we started earlier in the agenda. I'd like to remind any speakers that still wish to speak. They have two minutes to comment on the item, state their name and city of residence for the record. This is only open for people that have not already spoken. If you already spoke earlier in public communications on an item not on the agenda, then you're not, then you've used your time. So this is for new people to speak on items not on the agenda. So city clerk, do we have any new speakers?
We do. We'll go ahead and bring in call in user three.
Thank you. And please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Kevin Wilk is horrified at the fact that people use their first amendment right against the police, but has never made a comment on when the police shot at peaceful protesters, kids with rubber bullets some in the chest and arrested them during a hospital visit. You had no comment for the physical abuse and attempted murder by the police. So none of you should dare even utter Martin Luther King Jr.'s name when he condemned the white moderate as each of you are for being a force against justice and change more powerful than, than far right white supremacists. You condemn the Black Lives Matter activists in your city today as you would have condemned Martin Luther King Jr. in the sixties had you been in positions of power. After a protest in October, when Miles Hall mother mentioned that people may be upset at the noise of protests, but she can never hold her son again. The first Kevin, the first question you had, Kevin, was to ask police chief, what could be done about the noise of the protests as a disruption to diners? How utterly disrespectful, ignorant and plain incompetent a question? Kevin, you do not attend protests. You do not listen to the community's concerns. Black Lives Matter is not just a statement you whisper through your paper thin lips, but a commitment to anti-racism, which you embody and you actually act on, which I don't see anyone on this council doing, especially when we see y'all scowling at comments of criticism concerning y'all's complicitness in racism and police abuse. Also, little Miss Cindy Silva and the rest of you, read Roberts Rules and the Brown Act because y'all are commenting on things not on the agenda and respond, responding to things out of turn. So either learn your job or please resign. You're also not sick for putting the comments in the end, trying to decentivize comments that are, that are, and that is an insult to your constituents. Thank you.
I would just like to repeat that according to the handbook, we are able to have comments continue to the end after having 30 minutes of public comments earlier and we're adhering to the handbook. Next speaker, please.
Moxie Marsh. Hello, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. So my name is Moxie and I've been protesting and organizing in Walnut Creek since early July. Here are some things outside of January 9th that have happened at protests that never should have happened. I have attended a march where I have not attended a march where a car has not tried to drive through protesters or hit them while they cross the street legally in the sidewalk. At one of the first protests I attended, a man walked menacingly towards me saying, I kill people for fun. I am going to kill all of you for fun. I watched the city respond to other peaceful protests by deploying armed riot police five minutes from my house. I have been followed home from multiple protests. I have been screamed at to get a job in the middle of a pandemic despite having a job at the time. I have been told I am a waste of space who will never change the world. I've had a woman get in my face, pull down her mask and spit on me, telling me to shut up when I wasn't even speaking. I've had a man yell at me on video to put a dick in my mouth while I was protesting with one other woman. I am, while protesting in support of Planned Parenthood, I was told that I was the one abortion that pro lifers would have supported. I've been told all lives matter except for mine specifically. I have seen my friends tear gas mace and physically assaulted by the police, private security and fellow citizens. I have become increasingly anxious about leaving my own house because on every street I am reminded of another traumatic event that my friends or I have experienced in the last seven months. Black Lives Matter, whether or not anyone here would like to say that. I'd like to take the remainder of my comment as a moment of silence to reflect on the ways that the police, city council, citizens, visitors of Walnut Creek have hurt and let down this city to defend white supremacy and the status quo.
Next speaker is Sarah Dennison.
May I be heard?
Go ahead, please.
Great. Um, so I have been protesting in Walnut Creek for the past few months and watched the police beat up people on June 1st. I've watched them deploy tack dogs, attack dogs on peaceful protesters. And all of it, if you take photos and cast a black and white filter over them and edit out people's cell phones, it looks like something right out of 1960. Yet, the Walnut Creek Police Department has the nerve to post an MLK quote on their Facebook page about justice. This sick and twisted joke by our police department shows their lack of understanding of the racial superiority and white supremacy that they uphold. The people who were fighting against MLK were the Birmingham Police Department. He was stalked and harassed by the FBI, people that police stations work with. It just shows how callous and honestly, frankly offensive the Walnut Creek Police Department is. They don't understand basic historical truths about what happened in our society and instead try to twist black radical voices to fit their narrative of white supremacy. I'm honestly embarrassed to live in a town that's run by quote unquote progressive Democrats. And then they let the police department post offensive bullshit like this on their public Facebook pages. I am embarrassed that you guys have done nothing to hold the police accountable in this city. I am embarrassed that you've, you have done nothing to take accountability for the execution of Miles Hall just two years ago. I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed to live in a city that lets the police run wild without being checked in any way that's meaningful.
Next speaker is call in user four. Could we please have you identify yourself?
Please state your name and city. Hello, please state your name and city. Okay. Is this, is this the last caller?
I first wanted to say something to Cindy Silva. Everyone was specifically told not to comment on the cannabis vote. Yet you created a whole conversation about it. Read Roberts Rule and the Brown Act. Second, Mayor Wilk, as a person who was talking to the police officers on January 9th, I would like to quote something from myself, a 12-year-old activist. I am 12. I'm supposed to be happy, but you are all traumatizing me. I hope you are happy. I fought for my rights all my life, seeing 50 plus police officers in riot gear at a peaceful protest is going to anger me and I am going to yell. I'm sorry if I hurt any of the pigs feelings. Lastly, for all of the city council members, please, if you don't agree with something, don't roll your eyes, shake your head or interrupt. They're so immature of you, especially as grown ass adults.
Next speaker.
Mayor, I don't see any additional hands raised.
Okay, then we are going to close public comment. I would just like to state before we adjourn the meeting that any speakers, this is still a business meeting and decorum, so a couple of people stated Roberts Rogers Rules. Decorum and being appropriate in the meeting is going to get much more response than whether it's yelling or swearing or other verbal abusive language. And I would appreciate during a business meeting that people act appropriately and with decorum. And with that, we are going to adjourn the meeting of the concurrent regular meeting of the city council and public facilities financing authority meeting in memor, in memoriam of Joan McClure. Joan McClure passed away on December 11th, 2020. Joan was a Walnut Creek resident, a passionate animal activist and a founding Walnut Creek CERT leader. Before the inception of the Walnut Creek CERT organization, Joan McClure was a pioneer in pet emergency management throughout the area and beyond. Through her vision and tireless contributions, animals, emergency management developed into a formal discipline within CERT disaster planning and response. Additionally, Joan successfully advocated the creation of the Heather Farm Dog Park. Joan's contributions to the city are appreciated and will be remembered. Quite a legacy that she left. And with that, we'll be adjourning our regular city council meeting until our next regular city council meeting on February 2nd. Thank you.